All right, let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. All members of councilor are present with Councilors Miller, Santiago, and Polling being present via Teams. Next item, I assume Tyler's still. Yeah. Approval of the agenda. There is, I'm going to recommend a couple of amendments. The first one is to add a consent agenda item to add the appointment of Ian Holthsworth to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And the second one is, I'd really like to remove Resolutions 2219, 2220, and have them reviewed by the respective committees for comments and for comments on, from their perspective of the impacts of these changes. But leaving the standing of the code change there. Just, it would be referring those to the committees to have them look at it and get, you know, they are committees on these areas and the bylaws and how they operate is important to them as much as it is to us. And so I just think that instead of having it where it's coming down from us, that we have them look at it and comment.
First, I think it's clearly the right thing to do.
So point of clarification on that request. So we would be sending the current bylaws back to the committees, each of those individual committees, for review and recommendation prior to our discussion to create a more inclusive dialogue around this subject matter? Is that what your hope and desire is?
That's the goal.
Are there any concerns from others, or thoughts, I should say?
This is, I think that any agenda item is open to public conversation and those that are able to participate can speak on agenda items. I think that this is an afterthought and, you know, whether it's the right thing to do or not, I think it's important that we continue to move forward so that our committees can continue to do the great work that they're doing.
Yeah, my thought is just, there's a lot of changes in those bylaws. And having the committees be able to comment on them within their format and make recommendations that they may look at it and say, oh, this doesn't work for us, this works for us, might be a better way to go than giving them a chance to make public comments because these two are resolutions, there's no public hearing on them. This will give them the maximum opportunity to look at it, make recommendations to the council.
So what we tried to do with these was to capture all of your comments. And I think just from a staff perspective, it would be really, regardless of whether these need to be reviewed by those committees or how much more information you need in order to make a decision, what would be helpful for us is to know whether we kind of captured what you were looking for in these or if we need to revise them. So I don't want to unduly complicate this or suggest that you don't table this or send it down at the end of the conversation. But knowing if we're on the right track or not is something that will be helpful for us.
I also believe that there are certain counselors that have, or mayor, that have comments that are noted in here and they're included because those comments were made. And I think it's important to have dialogue with my fellow counselors for clarification on why they asked or didn't ask for certain things to be included. So I'm fully prepared to have a discussion and weed through some of this with my fellow counselors because they did take the time to ask for some of these things to be in here.
I don't recall bringing the Park and Rec issue up at our last meeting in a detailed sort of way. I remember some concerns from Alex that staff was being treated poorly. But I don't remember us saying, well, let's, let's have you guys go back to the drawing board on the Park and Rec Committee and draw up all new guidelines and how about if we don't allow someone living out of the city to be a chairman? I don't recall any of that.
So those are conversations that maybe the mayor or counselors have given to staff their feedback and staff has captured that in this document. And that is why I'm fully prepared to talk about these this evening. I've had conversations with committee members over the last week. I empathize with their concerns and I'd like to speak up for them and I'd like to have that discussion amongst ourselves this evening.
What committee are you talking about?
Any, the Economic Development Committee, Parks and Rec. Members of both.
So Mr. Mayor, since you're the one asking for the amendment to the agenda, do you have any concerns with the staff being able to present what they provided us tonight with discussion with, I mean, we don't have to make a vote on resolution, correct?
Yeah, I think it should be a work session, not a, I mean, I'm not prepared to vote on anything because even when I looked through this and, you know, I don't usually respond to group emails because of, you know, it's creating chain meetings and I'm very wary of that. But when you read through it, it just seems like very prescriptive and I, limiting of creativity from the Parks Committee. And some areas, the quorum issue, I think, is completely wrong.
So.
So I think it should be a work session and not approval of resolutions.
I mean, I guess from my perspective, to be honest, you know, staff is simply just trying to implement whatever instructions we hear from you all. That's all we're trying to do. We felt like we tried to take notes and stick with the minutes and go back through and really look at what was requested and reflect those in the bylaws, changes that are proposed. If, for whatever reason, you know, when these went out to you, you didn't feel that reflected that, you know, we would have been happy to take them off, we didn't hear anything. I think from, from the staff's perspective, if it's something that you all don't feel good about, I'd rather just remand it back to the committees and not go into it, to be honest. If it's going to become some kind of, you know, big disagreement essentially.
And a lot of my calls came over the weekend, so.
Sure.
Contacted me, so.
Sure.
I'll also say, Mayor, that traditionally, when you have, whether it's committees or anything else that are in the same category, you guys have instructed us that you want uniformity in rules. So for, or a entity that's required by law, such as your budget committee, that may have different rules. But if you have standing committees, I would anticipate that the bylaws for all of them would be uniform. And then if you have kind of ad hoc committees, that again, there would be uniformity in the bylaws.
Does.
You're not required to do that, but that's how you traditionally.
I assume the League of Oregon Cities has standard bylaws that can be based off of. Model.
I mean.
I'd have, I mean, we'd have to check and I don't know, where did the, do you know where the original bylaws came from that were actually put in in 2015?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure. They weren't around, but.
But, Mr. Mayor, it seems like what we're doing at this point in time is what we would do, what, what he is trying, where he is trying to ask us to remove this is, is the discussion that we would continue this during that time. So I guess.
I just.
I guess I'd like to just move on to either approving the consent agenda or not with those and then start the agenda.
Well, Jeanette has a, she can't speak with a feedback. She wants to reiterate what your concern is, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's what?
She wanted you to reiterate your concern.
I know that she can hear you very well. She wanted you to repeat your concern.
Okay. My, my concern is mostly that I don't think that, for me, I'm not ready to vote on either one of those. And I would rather have worked through them through a work session, looking back at having approved the agenda. I mean, I've got a stack of people that are commenting on this section, all opposed to it. So, and most of them are members of a Parks Committee or one of the committees. So I think that part of our job, I don't think they're opposed to the ordinance on the part about if you have conflict, how do you resolve these conflicts? I think they're opposed to some of these bylaws changes that are built within this thing. And I'd rather see it placed into a work session where a future meeting, we could sit down and go through. Maybe send them, make, have the Parks Committee and this Business Development Committee both make recommendations within it on what it should look like and you combine those. But I think the biggest thing was, it just became so wordy, the bylaws. And bylaws should be much more simpler than that. It's no offense to Peter and other lawyers, but it seemed very lawyerly.
I actually didn't write any of this. I made some light edits. No, I didn't write the originals or the, and obviously, anything you want to do is the correction.
I'm looking for a motion on approval of the agenda. And I've made a request and it can be taken or it can be ignored.
So. I guess I'd like to make a motion that we remove those items from the main agenda. From the condition. For another meeting, so we can have a work session discussion.
And add.
Doing it tonight.
And then add the consent agenda, appointing Ian Holthsworth to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Yeah, 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 this, I thought that was kind of separate, but yeah.
Well, it's the same motion. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the agenda, adding the consent agenda item of, of pointing Ian Holthsworth to the Parks Committee and removing Resolution 2219 and 2220 from the agenda and I've got a motion that I'm reading. Removing those from the agenda and putting them on a future work session. Do I have a second? Mr. Mayor? Counselor?
Can we confirm if Counselor Santiago is seconding or if there is a question during the motion or prior to the motion being asked?
My question, sorry, I have a question. I guess when you were discussing there that you were getting feedback and requests, is that something that was shared just only to you or something to the council? I would be very curious to find what, what's the concerns are about? Is it the wordiness? Is it the, how many words or the actual, what does it say? I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, I, they were phone calls that I received from members of the committee of, of at least one of, both of the committees regarding the changes.
So would a work session change that or would it just extending, would it change the verbiage of the bylaws?
It's, it's an easier, it's an easier format to work through because it's a lot more, it's not as structured to work through the, any changes to the bylaws that the council would like to make, which is typically a better way to do it where we're together working on it. And community members can attend and give input during that work session.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I have a second on Counselor McHugh's motion? Seeing no second, the motion dies. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Is there, could I ask a clarification?
Sure.
Is the addition of Ian H. to the Parks and Rec Committee contingent on the items that?
No.
Okay.
That, that's a separate item to be added.
And you would like to have that added still, correct?
Yes.
So I would move to the, accept the consent agenda with the addition of adding Ian H. to the Parks and Rec Committee.
An approval of the agenda as it is.
And the approval of the agenda as presented.
All right, hearing a motion to approve the agenda with the adding of a consent agenda item to appoint Ian Holthsworth to the Parks Committee. Is there a second?
Nothing.
This is Counselor Miller, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Miller. Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda with one change, adding a consent agenda item to appoint Ian Holthsworth to the Parks Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Public comments, is there anyone here who wishes to comment on anything on tonight? I have a list. And guess who's at the top of the list? Young man, straight out of Jobin Lane. Joel Haugen.
Good evening, short timer and counselors. I'll, I'll make this really quick, but it concerns the, the Park and Rec Committee and the Economic Development Committee and the other successor committees. A continuity, I, I think, is really important for, for a community engagement. And if you don't meet regularly on a, on a monthly basis, you lose continuity. So I, I would, I would strongly urge you to, to keep that continuity in the equation. Second one is, is overkill on rules and regulations, you know? So the, 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 the least possible amount of rules for a committee, especially a volunteer committee, that's desirable. And I don't think there's too much of contention about that. So I hope you can minimize the amount of rules and regulations for a committee. And then third thing is that I think everybody recognizes the value of a engaged and skilled set of volunteers in the community. And so let's, let's be, let's leverage that to its maximum, maximum extent possible. Let's not sideline them or push them away. Let's make sure that we really celebrate that whole action because that's what makes a vibrant community. And without that kind of vibrancy, you know, everybody fails. So I hope you keep that in mind as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Mr. Paul Fiderich. Yeah, agenda item number four. So this is, this is. Is this opposed to the municipal code change or is this a, because agenda item four has two sections. It's the resolutions on the bylaws and there's the municipal code change dealing with the conflicts that we had that arose with one. So if it's for the, if it's for the municipal code change, then I'd have you come up during the public hearing. If it's for the resolutions.
Anyone who's following, I give you guys an A. Trouble right now.
Um, so for the ordinance, there's actually a public hearing. So he's saying if it's on the, the ordinance, that you would make the comment at that time? And then if, if your, if your comment's on the resolutions, then you make it now?
There, I believe that I would do it during item four when we get to it.
So, yeah, so public, the, the only public hearing on item four is for the municipal code change on a, not the bylaws change because those are resolutions, there's no public hearings for those. That's why you would speak here if it's on the resolutions, if it's on the ordinance change, which is the, the changes to conflict resolution if there's a complaint or something.
I don't want to change that, that seemed to be well-written.
Okay.
Okay.
So you want to talk about the resolutions then?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. I just, I wanted to clarify because you said opposed to number four and there's three items on that.
I've come up here a lot, but I've never, I, this is the most confused I've ever been, so.
I, I think that we probably should have broken those out into different items, but we didn't, so. I understand the confusion.
Okay, because this won't be as smooth as usual because I'm having, okay. So Paul Fiderich Scappus, a member of the Parks and Rec Committee for over four years. And I come here to state my personal comments on agenda item four. So firstly, I'd like to say thank you to Council President Grayson for reaching out to me and discussing this beforehand. I did have some concerns about it after I read it and so thank you for reaching out. We had a nice quick discussion, it was very nice. So let's start with the resolution to change meetings to quarterly, which would be four hours per year for those scoring at home. I think was stated by the city attorney in his previous meeting that quote unquote, these committees don't really have that much to do, really only need to be meeting quarterly. So if you haven't been paying attention or scoring at home with current events, we have the recently acquired Grabhorn parcel, which as we know, had some public input issues. And we created the ad hoc committee for it. We have some new updated designs that were just released, that's going to need even more citizen input. We finally taken ownership of Chapman Landing and its current state. We, it needs a lot of work to reach its full potential. It's the only public access to waterfront in the city. Vista Park, it's a completely raw form and lots of work needs to be done to figure out what we're going to do with it. And lastly, the mayor's primary objective is to further create parks within walking distance of all Scappus residents. That's an impressive work list. And we're also behind with amenities per capita ranked by other Oregon towns. So there's a lot going on. So four hours a year. Not only would that be ineffective, but I think that would scare people away from joining the committee because people aren't, it's not about the hours, it's about being effective and creating change and being part of the change. If you're going to look how it's written now, it's like, yeah, we're going to meet four hours a year. Well, I guess that committee doesn't do too much. So I, I really hope that we strike that. Responsibilities and objectives are in Article Four. So it appears that, quote unquote, as directed by council, has been added to all facets of the listed responsibilities and objectives. Seems fine on the surface, but committees, and the committees are here to give advisement to the mayor and city council, we, of course. But the proposed code bylaw changes will not allow us to comment, discuss, or being put on the agenda, any items that are not first specifically directed by council. So let's say we have an outreach with citizens, we hear about an issue or about an opportunity or a need. You literally couldn't talk about it. And then we couldn't talk about even putting it on the agenda because by code, it would not be part of the directive that was already there. Unbelievable. So, you know, as we, for those of you that don't know, as we do it now, if something comes up, such as that, we discuss it first as a group, we discuss the validity. We might assign a study for more information. We don't want to bother the council until we do some work first. And then we try to understand it best and then we decide, hey, should we go in front of the city and tell them about it or not? It's working. I mean, sure, there's some changes that can be made and we can always get better. But to have such a stronghold on us, this doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I don't want to miss out on opportunities, opportunities for citizens. We, as this, as the committee members, feel that we are an extension of the citizens. And we're reaching out to them, we create relationships and then they end up reaching back out to us when they have questions about what's going on with parks. So as the directed by council, quote, quote unquote, in all the listed objectives and responsibilities, I would ask to strike those. And then lastly, the local issue, I think that's been well said, but I'll, and I'm the first one to say it, but I'll say it again. Everyone has a vested interest in Scappus, whether we live on the hill, which like I do. We pay taxes, the members of the school district, we use the same amenities. And ultimately, we have a hand in what's Scappus is today and where we want to go in the future. And we're doing it because we care. I've told Pete here that, yeah, I'm not part of the city, but I work for the citizens. And I want to continue to do that. And to have these rules just doesn't seem to make sense to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marissa Jacobs.
Good evening. Hello, thank you. Marissa Jacobs, speaking as a citizen this evening regarding agenda item number fo, four, regarding the bylaw changes to the committees. After a thorough.
More? There, yeah, more.
Okay. After a thorough reading of the proposed changes to the committees, I ask you hold. Hold to making sweeping changes to the committees at this time. The optics of these changes are questionable and alarming. First, the current mayor is weeks away from leaving his post and a new mayor will be sworn in along with two new council members. The new council, who will be installed shortly, should be given an opportunity to review, discuss and decide how they want to engage with our committee members. Secondly, the proposed changes deter volunteerism, transparency and collaboration with the citizens. If it weren't for a group of concerned citizens, it's very possible, Mr. Mayor and council, that you may have approved the original Grabhorn Park design without the Parks and Rec input. Imagine the uproar, you all avoid it by heeding the request to stop and include the Parks and Rec Committee. Through the group of volunteers, they dedicated their time to research and to completing community engagement to identify the needs of the city to inform a more collaborative park design. In the process, alleviating many hours of work from city staff by leveraging a committee who wants to work hard for the city they live in play in. My recommendation is proceed with caution on these proposed changes. Are these changes needed for committees to be most effective? Absolutely, yes. Are these the ones written here that will get the job done? Not exactly. Perhaps consider further refining the framework for how the city staff stakeholders attend and participate with our engaged citizen community committees with the objective of advancing the livability of the Scappus citizens. Maintaining and expanding a city requires true collaboration and teamwork and we need volunteers to help. Lastly, Scappus has a reputation for being non-collaborative and difficult to work with. This is fact, I've heard it too many times to count. These proposed changes will only substantiate this perception and further divide between the city and its citizens. Do the right thing, take a breath, talk about it, don't vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe would. Yeah. Do you leave it on? Okay, thanks. I would like to just comment on item four of the agenda, specifically the reduction in meeting time for the committees. People that I've spoken to over the past few years have expressed their concerns with transparency and limiting public engagement and this will further magnify this issue. If they are willing to and able to meet more often and have volunteered with that understanding, the city should take advantage of their desire to help and their free service. I'm not sure what prompted this change, but by limiting their engagement, they'll be less likely to volunteer in the future. We need more people involved, not less. More regular or monthly expectation should be the norm with a canceled meeting because it being the exception when nothing is happening instead of the other way around. We should be embracing our engaged citizens as a valuable resource and conduit to the citizens of Scappus. Thanks. Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda, the appointment of Ian Holthsworth to the Parks and Rec Committee. I have a motion.
Sorry, Kim Holmes here, I had written Susan to provide comment on the same section.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Kim, sorry.
Okay, thank you, sorry, it might not have been clear because I wasn't specific about what part of agenda I don't.
Oh, I, I apologize, I just looked, overlooked it, I apologize.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, President Grayson and City Council. So Kim Holmes here, resident of Scappus, vice chair of the Parks and Rec Committee and candidate for city council. And the comments I'm sharing with you today are solely mine. I did read that part of the bylaws and approve of that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to agenda item four, specifically the revised bylaws, changes for the Parks and Rec and Economic Development Committee. I'd like to begin by speaking to the challenges of the Parks and Rec Committee over the past year and I think what has led perhaps to some of the changes that are being proposed in the bylaws for both committees. So I really do believe that public engagement is a cornerstone of good governance. And I applaud then-city manager Mike Sykes for helping to create these committees, really to serve in the advisory capacity to the mayor and city council. And I would say from the perspective of a participant, it has been truly a rewarding experience to connect with other like-minded residents of Scappus and with the goal of supporting. and with the goal of supporting the growth of our parks and natural spaces. But however, there has been a breakdown in the feedback loop. For Parks and Rec Committee, the city has provided secretarial support for the group and it's a role that Isaac has served in well. I thank Isaac for that, but we really are lacking involvement from any city staff that directly oversees the parks. And in looking into the meeting minutes of other cities like of St. Helen's Park and Recreation, Recreation Commission, it's really not uncommon for the Parks and Rec Manager, the Government Affairs and Project Support Specialist, or the Public Works Assistant to attend those commission meetings. And I think that is a critical piece of that communication and feedback loop to the city. So I would ask that we perhaps consider having someone from that staff function attending as well. And just speaking on attempts to bridge that gap, I also want to give thanks to Council President Grayson for reaching out to myself and others to begin to talk through some of these challenges. But specifically regarding the proposed changes to the bylaws, I think the most concerning aspect to myself is reducing the meetings from once a quarter to, from once a month down to quarterly. And if we look to other cities again, that kind of have committees and looking at the precedents they set from St. Helen's to Oregon City, Astoria Seaside, they all meet monthly. And formally reducing Scapoose to meeting only quarterly would truly be exceptional and not in particularly a good way. So I would just ask that you guys look at the frequency of the meetings. I will also speak to the fact that I don't agree with the change, making the chair and vice chair be residents within the city limits. As I've talked to more residents, I get a sense that there is this growing urban rural divide, and I would hate to see the city do something that would formalize that divide and make access to participating in local government more challenging and difficult for some who are in our community relative to others. So I would ask that you look at that too. And with that, I thank you for the time to provide comments tonight.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
The Council McHugh moves to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second. Very a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, which is the appointment of Ian Holthorne to the Parks Committee, please state by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next item, new business. Columbia County song.
I'm going to hand this over to Margaret Trentred Smith. She contacted us last week. Wanted to get on the agenda to present a song about Columbia County.
Thank you so much. Is that you, Isaac?
Correct.
Thank you. Mayor Burge, City Council, thank you so much for allowing us to speak to you at such short notice. This is an announcement and, and a bid for your support at this point, moral and support of our project. Let me introduce Marilyn Allen, who is the Chair of the Columbia Choral of Oregon. Marilyn, can you hear us? I don't think that Marilyn is online. And Kevin Bryant Play. Kevin, did you want to say hello?
Hello. Yes. Thank you, Mayor and City Council for hearing us. Thanks.
I'd like for most of this time segment to be devoted to Kevin's music. You've had a chance to read the lyrics of this work. This is not merely a song. This is a cantata, which is a major choral work in prose and poetry, such as music. Kevin has written the magnificent 111 page score to words that are devoted to Columbia County. The story behind this very quickly is that artistic director Alice Rice Boyer and I consulted with one another four and a half years ago, and she revealed to me her desire, her vision to commission a legacy work for the choir. We brought this idea to the board. The board said, yes, we'd like this to be about Columbia County. I had, I was inspired and wrote a fragment of poetry, brought it to the board, said, shall I be your poet? The board said, yes. Alice shaped that idea. And then the lyrics just poured out of me one afternoon and we wrote this, this again, this, this love letter to Columbia County. We've embedded the name Columbia County deliberately within the work in order to encourage the fame of the county to spread, in order to encourage cultural tourism. So the point of this work is to, is to honor the Native American, past and present, to showcase the natural beauty of this county, to provide a unifying work, artistic work that transcends any divisions, political or otherwise, to unite the county. But more than anything, we care about the youth of this county, both now and in posterity. And that's what it's all about. Well, so, so miraculously, this marvelous composer fell into, you know, fell into our site. And Kevin worked for years on this. And and due to Alice Rice Boyer's excellent reputation in the world of choral music, she was asked to conduct a Columbia, pardon me, at Carnegie Hall in New York City. And they said, what do you want to do? They expected her to say, oh, I don't know. I'll do some, you know, some Bach or whatever. She said, no, we have this newly completed work. And they said, well, we don't usually allow new works to be performed. And so they vetted it for a month and found Kevin's music superb. So with that, I'd like to turn this session over to Kevin Bryant Play. Is there any way that he can share the score and then share a few of the, of the pieces of this work to you?
Yeah.
Oh, that would be grand. Yeah, I, there's a share button here, but it doesn't look like it's, it's a lot, would allow me them to actually.
Just change your settings. You should be okay.
Oh, look at that. Okay.
Thank you.
So let me try and do that. Okay. Now I need to, I've not shared on this. Sorry, I am in this process. It's asking me to do some things. Hopefully we can actually see the score rather than just hear bits of it. Here we are. I think we're good there. Okay. Oh. Later. Okay. So I don't know. Do you see my, I'm not sure how to share the screen. You probably see me or do you?
Kevin, if you highlight the score, it might show up.
You don't have your video on.
I, oh, I don't, I should turn that off.
No, on the top right of the screen, there's a square button called share. Click that. And it should drop open a menu on the right of your Teams window. And you will select windows and select the window you wish to share.
Okay, I am looking for the share button here. I don't see it.
It's very small.
Okay. Upper right hand, you say. I have it full screen. Let me take it off full screen. Maybe, no, it is on screen. I open share tray. Maybe that's what it is.
It's right next to the leave button.
Isaac, is this what he's wanting to share with us that we have in hand?
I'm not sure. I think he wants to share the music.
Yeah.
He wants to share the music. The score would be the notes on the paper.
Right.
Yeah, right. And I should do it. I still have.
It could be forwarded to us though, to hear at a later point. Yeah, why don't we do that? If we're having technical difficulties. So if you could forward it to Isaac so that we can hear it at a later point.
Mayor and City Council, if we have technical difficulties online, why don't, may we come back at a later point and do this in person? Where all technical difficulties can be worked out on the spot?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Sorry about this. Mayor and City Council, have you had a chance to read the score, the lyrics rather?
Yes.
Yes.
What, may I ask before we go, what was your impression?
I was very impressed with it. You know, we don't have the music with it and, but just the fact that you've had a date set up with Carnegie Hall, that puts us on the map right away. So I'm really impressed with it. I've heard the, you know, your group sing before and perform is always excellent. And I am really looking forward to seeing what you have in this really special, you know, tribute to Columbia County.
Oh, thank you. Well, please let us come back so that Kevin can play his music because if the words, if you like the words, a thousand times more, you will love this music. So, so thank you so much for being so gracious. Please reschedule us and, and we'll come back in person.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye bye.
All right. Next item, Parks Committee update. Parks Committee Chair Kara Hines, please step forward.
Welcome.
Better. Okay. All right. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I wanted to say thank you for inviting me here tonight for a Parks and Rec update. I know it's been a kind of a big past couple of months. I am really excited about all the conversations that I've had with everybody. And I want to say a big thank you to everybody, Councilor Grayson, Mr. Mayor, who've, who've, Isaac and Dave Sukka, who've all stepped in and, and really helped us. Like figuring out everything that has been going on, where our challenges have been and how we can really mend those and move on. With this update, since it's been a while since I have been in here, I wanted to start with all of our achievements over the past year. Now, this is just from January 2022 and on. So buckle up. I'm pretty excited about everything we've done. Okay, we have created internal and external committee goals to help us focus on our agendas. We have created a master list of Parks and Recreation stakeholders to increase opportunities for liaisons and recruitment. We have begun to work with city, we have worked with city staff to update the city app to improve park visibility through the app. We began signage discussions, including both wayfinding and informational signage. We created a master list of small parks improvements for public works. Amenities included signage needs, bench locations, needs for trash cans and dog pickup stations. We created an Earth Day event. We, we brought back Earth Day. And with that, we partnered with the Scapoose Bay Watershed Council, Scouts, Library and Solve to host a park cleanup at Chapman Landing and we collected over 15 bags of trash. We hosted a scavenger hunt to increase visibility and traffic to our local parks. And we learned that many people were completely unaware of two of our parks, including Creekview and Vista. We added over 100 photos to current, our current parks, Google pages through our Earth Day competition. And of course, that just increases visibility and just more traffic to our parks. We, our Parks and Rec member JJ Durin ran movies in the park with the last event hosting over 500 individuals. Is, it is her hope to incorporate more Scapoose Parks and Rec Committee members in that last year. I know Paul and I both volunteered with her. We reestablished a relationship with Scapoose Bay Watershed Council. After Dana left the committee, we just kind of had a gap to fill with that. And so we began more talks with Emily, who works for the, the council, and she hosted a talk regarding riparian repair updates. The Parks and Rec Committee members assisted in young tree waterings at Veterans Park when there was a heat wave. And our members attended the Scapoose Bay Watershed Public Information Meetings to learn more about their policies and planning for the environment. We donated 500 of our centennial fundraising dollars to Scapoose High School for turf fields. We engaged in ARPA funds discussions. We reviewed and discussed pickleball locations as this was a popular named amenity in the GPAC, and we have received public comment and support of that amenity. We engaged in 50 year planning committing discussions and we engaged with former DOG members to review best options for dog park maintenance with the city. We also engaged citizens at the annual town hall meeting regarding parks, wayfinding and signage. And we get to begin master planning with MIG next month. I hope this, from this list, it's pretty evident like how, how engaged we are as a committee and we get excited about that stuff. In August, that's when we kind of, when we began to encounter some more frustrations. We were feeling that through all of the work and effort that we were putting forward, we still were not being engaged in the way that we had hoped, and there were some missed opportunities. Since that time, we've had many fruitful conversations that have helped us uncover where there have been disconnects among our committee, city staff and councils, and ways that we can solve our issues. Our first major discovery was that we had internal goals that were not shared with the council or the city. So everyone was not aware that all, everything that we'd been accomplishing. And so we essentially, we would have two sets of goals, small goals that we worked on and then larger goals that we sent to the council. And we began this process a couple of years ago. And I think as committee members change, as city staff changed, there just was some disconnect there. And so one of the ways that we are going, that we're hoping to resolve this issue is come, doing a work session with council and the city so that all of our goals can be closer on the same page. And we all know what everyone's plans are for the year. I think that'll really increase transparency and we will feel included in this process. So I think that will be really, really helpful going forward. Another frustration that we came upon was parks developments happening without our knowledge and I just want to share a little bit of history of why this would be frustrating for us. Seven years ago, I've been on this committee for about seven years and I was involved in the original master plan. While we were building that, we were designing Miller Park as more of a nature based play park. While we were, while we were designing it, the play structure was removed and a plastic play structure was replaced. And then I learned about this development from my son because that is our local park. So that's really frustrating and honestly, a little bit scary to know that we're about to embark on this new master plan where it takes a lot of time. It's very intensive and things like that can happen. And I fully understand that disconnects happen, but that was a big one and is a really, it was a large frustration for us. So when Dave brought up the zip line, it was like, okay, this was the August 8th meeting. It was like, oh, that was such an opportunity for us to be engaged. And I wish that we would have brought, that would have been brought up to us. And maybe he could have said, hey, you guys like this zip line or this zip line? Or are there any other big park things that you think, or small park things that you think might go here? And it would have been a great opportunity for discussion. And at the end of the day, I think our goal is really to just be engaged and, and be heard and collaborate. And we have the time and the energy to do that. And so that's, that's our, our real hope going forward. Now I was able to talk to Dave and we had a great conversation and we were able to dialogue about lots of things. And one of, one of the things that we came up with was that I would just meet a little bit more frequently, frequently with him so that I can learn his challenges and get more like from his mouth, like what, what challenges he's been facing. And it can be things like, hey, you guys said you wanted this. I'm having this issue, like this isn't going to work. And I can bring it back to the committee and we can have more discussions. And then my hope also is that he's involved in the goal setting as well so that I can know, or our committee can know, okay, going forward, he wants to, you know, he's hoping that this will happen or this will happen. And it can be a great discussion. The newest challenge for our group has been the update to the bylaws. And I want to thank everyone for all the time that everyone has spent discussing that tonight. I know, I know it's been a challenge. Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your thoughts on it. And Councilor Grayson, I appreciate all the time. I know you've talked to several of our committee members. And so I just want to thank you so much for that. I would say that the biggest challenge for us is that the concern that not just that our meetings would be limited. I understand though, I think the way that it's been interpreted to me is that it's, we want a minimum of quarterly meetings. And the chair has the opportunity to And the chair has the opportunity to change that. I think the concern is that eventually it's going to be a one-way committee. If the council doesn't feel like working with us, then they wouldn't have to. So I would say that is the general concern that I've heard from my committee members. And so I just want to share that as you guys consider these later on. I also am hopeful. So with the, the council liaison position, I think this would be a really good, this would have been a really good opportunity for her to have reached out to me prior to this because I'm generally hearing about the, anything that's coming on the agenda from other Parks and Rec members. But I would really like to build up that position. One of the ways that we discussed at our last meeting to build up that position and to just help with our dialogue with our committee to council was at the end of our meetings, we will vote on the key points that we would like our liaison to bring to you guys. So she knows the, the issues that need to be addressed and you guys, it's clear, it's focused. So my hope is that these agenda items that are going to be very pertinent to us can make it to me prior to, prior to these meetings so that we can be aware of of what needs to be discussed. I don't always have the time to be looking at all the agendas and attending all the meetings. So I think that could be a way that we could really build up that position. That's, that's about it. I just wanted to say thank you. I know that was a lot. It's been a heavy two months, but I'm actually like, I'm, I'm really excited. Cause I think that when, I think after all of this, it, it really created some fruitful discussion. I just, I, I'm just really excited with how everybody was like, hey, let's come to the table and let's, let's work to resolve this. So I'm very, very hopeful about where we can go from here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
You're well said. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, city video updates. Alex.
Sure. So we currently have three essentially promotional videos on the website. They're, you know, several years old and we do have a company that reached out. I believe actually they had spoken to you mayor at a conference and then reached out to us after that.
Yes.
And they've offered to simply redo those photos. It's at no cost to the city. But I did want to make you all aware of it and simply get any feedback if there was any before we proceeded forward with that. She said that if we, if you were all to approve it now, she could do them in the spring. So we just kind of get us in the queue for moving forward. In terms of like content or anything like that, that would be a later discussion. I can't really speak to that. As of right now, she wasn't able to attend the meeting unfortunately tonight. But again, we just wanted to get lined up for having them redone in the spring. So we just wanted to see if that was all right with you all.
He's a very good price.
Yes, yes, it is.
So it just, so council knows that it's free, but they do sell ads on the video and that's how they make their money is by selling, selling advertisements on the, from local advertisers within the community.
Yes, she said they'll, they'll work with local businesses. Yep.
Is it, is it a pop-up like as you're watching the video or is it just a little banner on the bottom?
There's static icons, local businesses around the video screen. So it's, doesn't interrupt the flow of the video.
I got two copies. Is there, is just that there was two copies? Yeah, it's fine. Just to make sure there's not something I should be looking at one of.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Council President.
And then just so we can, you know, move forward and get in the queue, we can have this person, producer, director, whomever, meet with us, talk about, well, whomever council or mayor is at that point.
Correct, correct.
About certain locations or highlights of, of our city and.
Right, yeah. And I, and I talked, chatted with her a little bit about that and she said that, you know, some city councils are different. Some really want to be involved, some don't. But she said that that's certainly an option if that's the direction you all want to move in at that time. Yeah.
Thank you.
I just got a text from Jeanette. She's going to be logging off. She's boarding her plane.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? Questions? Do I have a motion?
I, I had a quick question.
Good.
So if we don't like the product, what, what do we do?
So that was one concern that I flagged is that they, the city's not allowed to edit these and the reason is because they don't want, you know, they take their professional reputation seriously and they're concerned about substandard editing. But it's kind of a two-way street. So if, if you don't like the end product, we're not going to be able to demand that they edit it or edit it. It is free, but we're what they do and we're not going to get final cut.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, go ahead.
So at the end of the day, we would have to approve whatever is provided by them to say city council approves posting this or sharing this or there'd just be an expectation of, once it's delivered, city staff will put it on the website.
Once it's delivered, it's the product. I mean, we, I, I'm sure, I'm sure they would work with us if, if people had substantial concerns. But this is, the contracts are set up in a way that there isn't like, if your artistic vision in there, artistic vision differ, we're not going to be able to demand like certain changes or cut it ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, that said, she, she did say that she'd be willing to have some discussions with you about the content. And then, you know, I think from staff perspective, I don't think we would have any intention of posting anything until you had seen it and made sure that you all approved. So and again, I, I'd want her to come speak to you all herself. She just wasn't available tonight.
I just, yeah, and I appreciate that explanation. I would just want to make sure that we as a council or whomever approves of it, that they're visually watching it and knowing that the product is something that we give the green light for.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, Tyler.
So I, I just want to clarify that when you say that we can't edit it, you just mean that we can't edit it ourselves, but we can give feedback on it? And then my second question is, if we don't approve of it at the end, we're not obligated to post it on our city website, are we?
So the, the language is a bit, was a bit ambiguous and, and we'd want to double check. But my understanding is what they were concerned with was us taking their video and then manipulating those videos in some fashion. As far as whether we can say, you know, this, whether it doesn't meet community values or, or something else, whether we can decline to post it. I'd want to take another look, but as far as us editing their content, you can't.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I would be fine with that. As in, you know, we don't personally edit it. We give feedback and ask if they're willing to edit that. But at the end of the day, I wouldn't want to post something on our city website that doesn't 100% meet our expectations. I wouldn't want to be contractually obligated to post something that doesn't, that isn't, you know, the council isn't fully comfortable with.
So Alex, is the current video still on the website or?
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
So there, you can view the previous work, which is still on the website somewhere.
On the homepage of the
Okay.
Under video tour.
Yeah. And I know that they worked closely with the city five years ago on developing that messaging. Who's that?
I think someone logged on with them.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council direct the city manager to enter into a contract with CGI Digital to update the city video series at no cost to the city.
Hearing a motion for, by Council President Grayson, do I have a second?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Do you have access to that contract and what that?
Could make your motion contingent on us not being required to post it to the website.
Thank you.
And that would better allow us to have that conversation.
Great. I move that, can I retract that?
Yeah.
I move that council direct the city manager to enter into a contract with CGI Digital to update the city video series at no cost of the city, contingent that we are not required to post it on any sort of city platform.
Hearing a motion by the council president, is there a second?
This is Councilor Miller, I'll second.
Seconded by both Councilor McHugh and Councilor Miller. Any discussion? Paul.
Yes, being a marketing professional for many years, these guys don't want to do a video and then all the work and then we come back. What normally happens is you ask for a storyboard. The storyboard is very easy for them to, to make. The storyboard will say very visually, here's what we're going to, the images we're going to have and here's our messaging. I suggest you put into the contract that they have to give us a storyboard and we have to approve the storyboard before they go to video production. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other discussion?
We amend the motion?
Yeah.
I amend the motion that we approve the storyboard before we, before the video is completed.
Hearing an amendment to the motion to add the terms that the storyboard is approved before moving forward to production, is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of just, this is just the amendment to the motion. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilor Miller, aye.
Josh Pauling gives us a thumbs up, aye. Motion amendment carries passes. So now the main motion is with that language added to the, to the original motion. So.
There's still opportunity for?
A council president. Councilor McHugh made an amendment to your motion that was to add the language that the count, the city approves the storyboard for the, for the videos before production starts. That was approved by the council. So now there's the main motion that includes your motion and that portion of it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Does?
Go ahead.
Does the city retain creative, intellectual creative property of the previous videos? So if we provide those videos to them, do they create ownership of that?
I think they created the prior.
Yes. All of them, so they already have a connection to this. Thank you. I second.
Well, it's already been seconded.
Did it already say?
There's a motion, yeah, there's been a motion, a second amendment and a second.
Well, if we had the amendment, would we have to?
We have to go back to the motion. Now we're, we don't, but you don't need to second that emotion.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion on, we're back to the amended emotion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, thanks for that suggestion.
Next item, number four, standing committees, code and bylaw changes, Scappy Sparks and Rec and EDC resolution. We will be starting with ordinance number 905 and ordinance amending Scappus Municipal Code Title II, modifying section 2.04.080 appointments and 2.04.110 committees. Isaac?
Aaron, counsel. Our approach to adjusting and adding to Title 2.04 was to pattern it off of what council requested directly. You would recall in August and September, we had some conversations about how we would, how you would want to look at complaints from committees if they came up. And legal counsel suggested a hearing in REM to which there was general consensus. There were some other points of the matter about how those would happen. But essentially the changes to the title are just that, it's a hearing in REM. So essentially if there was a complaint, it would go to the mayor. The mayor would have the option to essentially privately mediate the complaint or to ask a member of council or the council president to do that instead or her stead. If they went through the mediation process, it could be resolved that way if it came back. It would go to a hearing. Eric would also recommend a hearing directly. The process is outlined there. Essentially each side would get a designated amount of time, I think it's 15 minutes, to essentially make their case or to talk about the complaint. They could reserve five minutes for rebuttal and go back and forth. And then it would be up to council to make a decision. These would be public hearings at a separate meeting time than the regular council meeting. We can't really avoid that. And so the compromise was to make it at a different time. Normal council meeting kind of open propriety. So, does any questions about the ordinance?
Make sure you're into the microphone.
Yeah, there's any questions about the ordinance, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, why don't we, before we start, this is a public hearing. So why don't I open up the public hearing on ordinance number 905? Is there anyone who'd like to speak to ordinance 905? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to questions by council. Councilor McHugh?
Yes, I understand. It's a two-step process. If we need the second step, we use it. If we don't, it can be resolved by the council president or the mayor.
Correct. There's some discretion built in, but yes.
Isaac, have these been vetted by any of the committees?
No, in the past, we haven't brought any changes above the municipal code to the committees. We haven't brought changes to resolutions or the bylaws to the committees. Typically that is something we reserve for council. When we're asked to bring things to you, we typically do directly.
Counselor.
I have a question on the number of days and how that was determined. The 30 days for the mayor to respond to the receipt of the complaint and then 45 days for the actual meeting, if it's a private meeting with, with the mayor, I'm just curious on the 30 days and the 45.
There wasn't anything particular in mind. I was trying to cut a balance between giving time for consideration about how the process wants to proceed and time, not too much time to allow the respondents and the complainant to be heard and feel like they were being responded to.
Mr. Watts?
The, the complaint that was in front of you was all based on emails. But it's possible that a future complaint may be based on conversations or something of that nature. And so our, one of our thoughts was people needed a reasonable time in order for the mayor or others to, to decide on the desired course of action or how to approach it. But we also wanted the memories to be fresh in people's mind.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I'm operating off a laptop here with no printed material. So I just want to clarify, we're only discussing right now the complaint process.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by council?
I have a question. What is the purpose? It might be some legal matter, I don't know. What is the purpose of responding, the mayor responding to the complaint via certified mail?
That's just what was there. I think the idea behind it originally was to make sure that something was sent that could not be ignored. And if it comes back, the intent was to have it on the record that it was not responded to particularly.
Thank you.
And this was reviewed by Peter?
Yeah, this is modeled after a 33710 validation and a Luba hearing. I kind of, if a Luba hearing and a 33710 validation had offspring.
Just for people who are in committees or chair committees, it continues to be repeated in some of the documentation that we're looking at tonight. It says three unexcused meetings. What would that, what would that look like for a committee member? In my opinion, it would look like them emailing or making contact with the chair. The chair doesn't have to acknowledge that they're not going to be there or not, but the fact that they told the chair that they're not going to be there, that counts as excused. I mean, does the chair then say, no, I don't, I don't excuse you? I mean, the mayor at the beginning of the I mean, the mayor at the beginning of the meeting says, you know, with the exception who is excused. I mean, technically, could he not really, you know, excuse them? Like, could a chair, I mean, I just want to make sure that unexcused, does that just mean that they've informed the chair they won't be attending and that counts as being excused?
I think that's one of the reasons we're discussing this, to be honest. We typically follow what council does to be with our committees.
My opinion on that is that, you know, unexcused is, there's no, you don't contact.
Call no show.
You don't, yeah, you, yeah, pretty much no call, no show. You know, you're, there's, you know, you're a volunteer, but there's an expectation if you no call, no show, three consecutive meetings, you've pretty much said you're no longer a part of that, that committee.
Do you want to update the language to say, you know, something besides unexcused, like just that you didn't show up?
Without prior notice.
Yeah, without prior notice.
Yeah, without.
But who does that land to besides the chair? I think is my question.
I mean, would you want the, like the recording secretary CC'd or something like that? We could do that.
I think it would be good to have a record with staff to ensure that every, you know, it's as transparent and everyone's aware. Not that city recorder needs more emails in their inbox, but.
But that's why I typically put it on the record, because I've gotten, gotten it via email, text message, phone call. And so at the beginning of the meeting, if someone's called and given a reason, I'll say that they are excused. If they're not, I just, they're just not here, I don't know why. But I don't recall the last time that happened.
Mr. Mayor. What if there is a chair who has received an email, doesn't acknowledge publicly that that has been excused? You know, the person who sent the email definitely has a paper trail. I sent the email, look, I mean, we've had that happen to us. But let's say they said, I called and I left a message and the chair says, meh, I didn't, I didn't. You know, I want to make sure that based upon where we've been and why we're doing this in terms of excused and unexcused absences that.
We could write in that they have to notify the recording secretary as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Because half the times it is Susan that gets the message.
The recording secretary would be the sign.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that for me, it's always.
Right, for, for council, yes.
All right, any other changes or?
I have some comments regarding appointments, but which technically is in this section.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So in 2.04.08 appointments, it says appointments to city commissions and committees shall be made by the mayor with consent of the council. For those that don't know, it is written in our charter that the mayor has sole power to assign people to commissions and committees. And in order for that to be changed, it has to go to a vote to the city. It has to go on a ballot. A change of language to charter needs public input and a vote. So I am not suggesting that we go that far. However, I would like some language, I would like to propose some language changes to this section that wouldn't require a change to the charter, just to add some more layers to the process. One of those would be, I believe at this point, and I've confirmed with our city recorder and our city manager, at this point, people can look online, see that there's an opening in a committee, they can apply, they send in their application. It directly goes to the city recorder or some sort of a platform that city office staff is able to see. And immediately upon receipt, at this point, the person would be Mrs. Reeves. And she responds to the person and says, I have received your application. It's my understanding that then she takes that application and she forwards it on to the mayor. And then at that point, it's the mayor's discretion on the time in which it's responded to or handled or when we see it as a council. I propose that it's not in here and I don't know if it needs to be. Maybe we don't get someone as efficient as Susan in the office one day. But I don't know if it's important to add that here to make sure that that process stays, that upon immediate receipt, a staff member replies to the applicant, letting them know that it's been received and that it's been forwarded to the mayor. I would like to put in that the applicant will be responded to by the mayor with an answer to their application within 30 days. We meet as a council the first and second Monday of the month, so within 30 days, it doesn't seem to be an issue to me that it would not, you know, it would get on an agenda within 30 days, even if we only had one meeting the following month. If other counselors aren't open to that, we can talk about the amount of time. One thing that I would like to see changed is that when the application is received by city staff, that it is not just forwarded directly to the mayor, that it is forwarded to all of council and the mayor. So that council knows that, let's say, three applications have been turned in for economic development. Because at this point, council never knows who is applying or how many people have applied. All we see, for example, this evening would be a name on a consent agenda. And we wouldn't know that maybe there were three applications that were reviewed and only this one person was chosen. But if maybe language was added and we were all included on at least seeing these applications, we would then know there were three applications received, they were forwarded to, to council and, and the mayor. We'd be a little more in the loop about applications that the city is receiving. That, so a couple of things would be, the change would be that the city recorder, whoever receives these applications, would forward them to council and the mayor. And then the mayor would respond to the applicant within 30 days with a decision. And in between that time, it has come before council on a consent item or something like that. So that if we do know that three people have applied and only one has been assigned, that would then allow room for counselors to ask questions of the mayor, like, we don't have to, I mean, it's his choice, right? But we could have, like, hey, what was your reasoning or what were your thoughts with that? We don't have to do that in a public setting, but, you know, we could just, and he doesn't have to explain. It's his choice, it's in the charter. So those are my proposals for appointments.
Maybe even more important would be just to give the mayor some input before he makes the decision.
I mean, that would be up to a counselor's discretion if they wanted to call the mayor and give their opinion. But again, he doesn't have to take the information he.
Of course.
Yeah.
It's just a recommendation.
Absolutely.
His choice.
Absolutely.
Understand that.
But I think.
Well, so, I mean, you can literally, so say I decide to, say I decide to, I'm gonna pick on you, Joel, is that okay? Okay, I just wanted your permission. So say I, you know, Joel puts in an application to be on a committee and I say, yes, let's appoint him. And a majority of the council says, no, we don't like Joel Halgen. I mean, we all love you, but I mean, that's why I'm picking on you, because I've known you the longest out of everyone out here. I guess I could have picked on Joe too, but it's, I've never seen it happen. I've seen it where there's been strong enough objections or we actually took the appointment off the agenda and put it on, off the consent agenda and put it on agenda item. The person still got appointed. But, you know, I mean, you, you never know when you're looking at that. And on that public process, you know, on that side of it. So I don't have a problem with adding language on, you know, timeframes. Or, I mean, I think it should just be, I don't know if we needed in the ordinance on, I think it should just be policy that all council members get a copy of the application. Because that way, because at some point, they're going to be asked to consent to an appointment. It would be nice if they had that information upfront. Just in case, you know, somebody's appointing all kinds of people that aren't, don't have the best interest in the city. You never know. I don't think of things today, I think of, you know, future, you know.
I have a question regards, regarding delegation of authority for, from the mayor in the selection process. So as I read it, it says the mayor, president, council, council president or a counselor. It doesn't necessarily identify it in the, I guess it would be a process of whom. So I, how I read it currently, it's the mayor could ask any council member to take on that responsibility. But I would, I would assume, or I think, I think it would be best interest that if the mayor does not want that responsibility, whomever the mayor may be, that they could delegate that to the next, who would be the council president, rather than saying, well, Brandon really likes parks, so I'm gonna have Brandon make that decision rather than council president.
And, and are you speaking specifically to the complaint processes, are we?
Yeah.
Okay, I think the.
That was, that was the intent.
Okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll be the first one to admit, there's a lot of words in this stuff. So thank you for the clarification.
We did try to think of all these various scenarios. I think, I think part of the thought was that if, so for example, you wanted the committee liaison to do it instead of the council president or the mayor, and that committee liaison was neither of those two people. I think there was just the idea of trying to build in some amount of flexibility so that this didn't create new problems. I think that was kind of what we were, we were thinking at the end of the day, but we can.
The council was a skilled mediator. I mean, there's some people that are just really good at bringing people together.
Right.
You know, depending on the situation.
So we, we could just see various reasons why maybe you, maybe the, you know, or maybe one of them's not available and the other one, you know, who knows, may, you know, maybe they're related to a family, someone who's a family member who's on the committee or some, you know, we were just trying to think of, of those scenarios. Yes.
That makes me, I can understand that. So sometimes maybe the council president wouldn't be the right person to have request of that. So if it's the delegation is in the power of the mayor, mayor's position and that they could either delegate council president or a other council member, that makes, that gives me clarity. So thank you for speaking through on it.
May I ask for clarification? On the matter related to the noticing of the advances to the chair and the recording secretary, would you be okay moving that to the bylaws? It feels more like a bylaw type of issue than an ord, than fitting into this ordinance particularly. This is, was I thought meant, yeah, I thought this was more meant to guide the process and not describe how things are noticed by committee members to each other.
I'm in favor.
Yeah.
Then just also as a follow-up, I know that Counselor Grayson had made a note about the code. And then Mr. Mary, you had said something about just making it kind of a, just a general policy for us to share all the applications with council. Was there any further discussion or follow-up on that we needed to note?
What if the mayor does not respond within 30 days? Is that just external pressure that the council puts on now that we know the applications, what applications are coming in?
I think the way it would be set up, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I'd ask a question on that, though. What if the mayor is incapable of doing the job for one reason or another?
There's actually among the reasons that someone would be replaced is lack of confidence. So if, if someone were to have a debilitating accident or something like that, we wouldn't have to wait for a certain amount of time. We could just determine that they, there's a process for that.
So in the, the charter does address it as well.
Yeah.
I think generally.
The charter, so in the.
That's all I was asking, yeah, map it out, thank you.
Yeah, and, and the charter, it's the council president or the president of the council is, is in the charter. Whenever the mayor is unable to perform the functions of office, the president shall act as mayor. So that, and that really means a de-cap, you know, incapacitating, yeah.
Yep.
It's not that he's out on vacation for a weekend and it's incapacitated.
Just a reminder, mayors can also be they or she, I think is really what, and we keep on saying he, I just want to be mindful.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
Any other questions? Okay, so this is a first reading, I need a motion.
Is it, there's quite a few changes in here. I am guessing it might be fairly difficult to capture them all in a motion.
I agree.
Well, we purposefully brought this early so we could have time. I think we have time to rewrite them and still get them through.
Rewrite the code?
There's at least five changes of substance.
Could there be a motion to have the updated?
We could.
Just send them back?
As.
No, what we could do is we could, a motion to postpone this item until the next city council meeting where you could do the updates. We could finish, at which point we'd do the first reading. And then the second reading and passage would be at the meeting after that. So is that what you would prefer, Isaac, is?
I just want to make sure everything's captured accurately.
Peter?
I mean, we're on the side of caution. If we don't feel like we can capture all these extents to bring back.
Okay, so why don't we, looking for a motion to postpone ordinance number 905 to the next regularly scheduled council meeting?
I move that we postpone amending ordinance number 905 until the next meeting.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2219, a resolution rescinding resolution number 20-17 and establishing the bylaws of the SCAPUCE Parks and Recreation Committee, Isaac.
Aaron Council, I'd kind of like to approach both resolutions at the same time. The only substantive difference is going to be in the purpose listed for each committee. That way, we're not wasting time. That's part of the reason why we write these bylaws, the same for all the committees, is that we can do a lot of the same updates at the same time, because the processes used are similar. So first thing, a couple of things to note. We took very thorough notes when we were talking about committees during August and September. The bylaw changes that are reflected in here are a direct result of that. We just kind of went down the list of things that were asked for in terms of adding definition of purpose, adding language about ethics and communication and kind of cleaning that up. We also didn't, we tried not to create new language, so a lot of the language around ethics and behavior and professionalism was pulled directly from council's team agreement, the team agreement of the Parks Committee as it stands. I believe there's a section of eth, on ethics now for council as well, and the municipal code we pulled from that. So the vast majority of language in those areas is not new. It's just being repurposed and instilled into the bylaws. Given all the discussion about the quarterly meetings and various pieces of this, I'm just gonna kind of run down the list.
This, this wasn't at all about the Parks Committee, and I didn't mean to offend anyone. What we had heard about the other committee is that there have been multiple meetings in a row where there were no agenda items. And so I think the comment that I made wasn't, they all need to be quarterly. My comment was, if there's nothing on their agenda, it probably doesn't make sense for them to be more than quarterly. Because in my, having been on a lot of different committees myself, the thing that bothers me the most is when I show up and either we don't make quorum or we don't have anything on the agenda substantive, and I've driven to a meeting at the last 15 minutes. And so it wasn't meant to suggest, and, and my thought with the quarterly was, if there's really nothing on the agenda for so many meetings in a row, at least quarterly, maybe they could get together and brainstorm, but they probably didn't need to meet more than that. So again, that wasn't, I was not trying to denigrate your committee in any respect. It was in response to being told that the other committee didn't have any agenda items for like, for months or something, four months in a row. That's what made me say it, and I should have been far more careful with my words.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We have a requirement that people who, in order to be appointed to a committee, just as. appointed to a committee, just as a committee member at large to this Parks and Rec or the Economic Development Committee, in order to be a committee member, they must live within city limits.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
We want to discuss the quarterly meeting thing anymore since we're kind of there.
The what?
The quarterly meeting.
The quorum?
No, the quarterly meeting.
Quarterly, I I tend to agree that it's better to have monthly and cancel if there's nothing on the agenda versus quarterly. And then having more, I just think that having regularly scheduled meetings is on a monthly basis. It's, I think, I I can't remember who put it out there, but there was a comment about the the energy that's created by meeting people that get to meet every month and have those discussions versus that gap in time. I mean, I, we we see it with, you know, the Budget Committee only meets a couple of times a year, and it's like strangers coming together. So my my is you have the monthly meetings and if there's nothing on the agenda, then you just say, look, if we don't have anything, why have the meeting?
I would point out, we we have done that, and sometimes um, you know, the the request has been that we meet anyway, which we do, but then during the meeting, there are complaints that we have no agenda items. So we're just not really sure.
And it's the chair's responsibility to create the agenda, correct?
Right.
They, the way it's been done, um, there's a comment first, I think, Tower's had his hand up for a minute. I apologize.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Sorry.
Yeah, so my my feeling on the uh, how often we have meetings is basically I'm going to kind of back up and look at this from um some of our previous conversations, that the scope of work that these committees are doing um basically comes from council after our goal setting session. I think it would make sense if these committees are empowered to make their own schedule. Um, as soon as, you know, our scope of work comes out after our goal setting session at the beginning of the year. And then that's published and everybody knows when those meetings are going to be. Now, if they, let's say that they have the meetings monthly. Now, if they know they don't have agenda items for discussion at the following meeting, then the prior meeting is the time to say, we're going to cancel the upcoming meeting. Uh, that's how I look at this.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
I think my question is, are we, are we building the floor or are we building the ceiling on what our expectation is of meeting? And so I would think quarterly, having it based in the language to say, our expectation is that any committee, I can't say any committee because the Budget Committee doesn't operate the same way.
These two.
These two committees, the the baseline is that we expect that the committee will meet quarterly, and then it would be on the chair to develop agendas for additional meetings. I mean, could it be up, I mean, it could be up to twelve. Could they meet more than once a month if need be?
I think we were meeting, was it twice for a month for Crabhorn? Yeah, so we did add meetings for that. And then also, we've discussed um for the master plan process for parks, because there will will be meaty, meaty, meaty meetings, wow. That those could be two hours instead of one.
Right.
So we we've definitely made adjustments to add and then make them longer if there's big projects.
So if this is the framework by at least having language of meeting at minimum every three months, then it gives us at least a baseline of measuring the effectiveness and then also providing the chair with the opportunity to grow those meetings out based on the committee's need. They kept, did they capture that?
That's, that's what we were attempting to do. We were attempting to capture the floor. Um, as that if if there are no agenda items or if there's the task um that council requests and they decline to do it, which has been another issue that we've had.
Mm-hmm.
And in that, in that event, the meetings would would happen at least uh quarterly. And and maybe the council liaison could make sure to go to that quarterly meeting and just kind of mention how declining to accept tasks and also declining to come up with the agenda items on their own is kind of the antithesis of the intent for this program of bringing subject expert together on a committee to advise the council. So maybe it isn't working via conversation that is on people have. But that, these are all base, these are all based off of examples that we've experienced and shared with as a council. And so, again, we're trying to build in the minimum base for for our expectation.
I'd also like to make a point about the quarterly meetings. The Planning Commission does not meet when they don't have agenda items. There could be nothing for a year and they wouldn't meet. This is a little more lenient. Um, and we're trying to recognize that this is different. Um, and we're trying to recognize that they, the committee members have made comments about this. So trying to find the middle.
But maybe we're, don't have to do everything the same for both the Economic Committee and the Park and Rec Committee. You know, I see there is a difference there. And uh, and why can't we just say the Park and Rec Committee is going to meet monthly unless the meeting is canceled? And uh, and if the Economic Committee doesn't have, they would like to, we haven't heard anything from them, rarely hear anything from them, to be honest. And uh, uh, but uh, they can meet quarterly if they want, you know, but I think the Park and Rec Committee needs to meet monthly. And if there should be a month where there's not enough agenda items, they can cancel the meeting. I don't see a problem with doing that. I don't know why both committees have to have the same exact rules.
What's president?
So it's my understanding that shall hold meetings at least quarterly and may hold meetings more frequently than quarterly if a project has been assigned or they're working on something. So I think this statement is saying exactly what Pete is is trying to get across is that Parks has full discretion to meet once a month. They have full discretion to meet twice a month if they want. But as a committee, as a as a advisory committee, which those two are equally, they kind of run on the same thing. They have to at least meet four times a year and with an agenda, you know, with items to discuss.
I think the bylaws actually contemplate some meeting without, it it kind of just says they have to meet at least four times a year. If they want to meet more, there would be agenda items.
And 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 some committees are more than willing and ready to do that, and some others, maybe they're not.
Parks has a full agenda for over a year right now.
And they did before they even had the master plan. So, you know, like.
As long as I can remember.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to address a point about why the bylaws are the same. Um, historically, it's been one staff member that's done both of these committees. For administrative convenience, I know that's a artsy term, but it helps staff do the job to have the same committee bylaws, the same rules, because then we know exactly what's going on with both committees at the same time. And it just kind of helps. That's why they're on the same days. That's why bylaws have been the same. That's why the agendas look the same. It's just to help us make sure we stay on top of everything, we get everything right, that we're getting everybody the information that they need accurately, and so there's no confusion.
You say everybody, we're only talking two committees.
Well, and council from stuff from committees, other staff members who are getting things from or sending things to committees. Um, timelines are the same. It just helps everything stay organized.
All says understood. I don't have a problem with it. But the 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 feeling that I think people got was that less communication from our Park and Rec Committee, the better.
Oh, that's really unfortunate.
But I think that's the communication that some people in the Park Committee felt. You know, then why don't you guys just meet four times a year? We'll be okay with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, you know, people can interpret language as they do, but the the minimum requirement is that they meet four times a year, and we'd be thrilled if they met more. So thanks to those that do, and we hope they continue to. But I never once for a second was, I mean, I didn't, I know exactly where that line came from, and I know exactly why it came up from there, and it has nothing to do with the people that are sitting here today or spoke today. So just where we're at, and we have to have some minimum requirements to make sure people are doing what they signed up to do.
It's not worth a long discussion. Let's just do it the way you've got it. I'm okay with that, and our committee can go and do what they want to do.
Can I ask you a question, Pete?
So you say do it the way that we're going to do it. I think we're here for a reason from doing it the way that we've done it. And so that's where I think we do need to address this because there are citizens who are engaged in our committees that are bringing questions and concerns. And I think that it's our obligation to answer those. And this is, yes, maybe a time consuming process. But I would rather that we we have people walk away feeling confident about their time that they volunteer to support the city's efforts rather than, I think, the imbue imbue being ambiguous in where each of these uh different committees differ. And so I I I hope that there is value in this conversation. My recommendation, what, I guess, could you give me more clarity in your question?
Yeah, you wanted to meet month, wanted to meet just quarterly, like we've talked about, just the issue we've been discussing.
Okay, well, I would repeat myself as I had indicated that we should set the minimum at a quarter. So that indicates that throughout the year, I know that both of these committees will at least meet four times with the opportunity based on their needs to increase those meetings to up to twelve, if not more, meetings per year. So I think I'm in a a lot of agreement with you. I just don't know if you're interpreting that correctly.
That's the way I interpreted.
And why are you asking me?
Because I didn't hear you say that before.
So I think, I don't know, does anyone else online have any comments about when committees meet or how often?
So we're talking, the only place I'm looking for the meetings for somewhere is a membership. Officers.
Article six.
Meeting procedures.
Mr. Mayor?
Tyler?
Um, like I said earlier, I think it should be up to the committees to um set their schedule based on their workload. Um, they're the ones that know how often are are, they're the ones that are going to know the best, you know, how often they need to meet to be able to accomplish their goals. Um, you know, that I I don't know how we would set or even know um how often they would need to meet. So I think that's something that they need to discuss among themselves and um set. Uh, my only worry is, is that if they meet more than once a month, um, the staff time um that that will take and just making sure that uh we do have the bandwidth with staff uh to be able to accommodate uh meeting more than once a month.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate that comment, uh, Council Miller. Um, I think right now what we've done is that when there have been very labor intensive projects like the Grabhorn Committee or something like that, we've just simply, you know, carved out the time and made sure the staff were available for that. Um, generally speaking, you know, we're accustomed to once a month, and that's certainly, you know, something we have kind of baked into um monthly duties, you know, and those um well, right now, Isaac is covering both committees. However, the intent is that once the associate planner comes on board, that they take over economic development, and then Isaac will um stick with parks. So there'll be a little bit of a um at least divide there in some of those duties.
When looking over this, and A, it says at least quarterly, and may hold meetings more frequently than quarterly if projects have been assigned by count city council. So I think the if projects have been assigned by city council that requires meeting on a more frequent basis. But so one of the messages I got tonight from the committee members that were here, the Parks Committee, is that not only do they work on the council assigned projects, but they're kind of being the eyes and ears for parks and recreational opportunities in the community, and they bring things to the committee, then they bring up that they would like to more bring up to the council. So that wouldn't be a council assigned project. That's more of an organic function of a advisory committee outside of the assigned things within the goals. Obviously, the goals are, you know, through the process of the council goals, but there are things that circulate up, and the more ears and eyes you have out there in community members that are on the com- committee bringing the uh issues to our attention, the better. So it just, I I I I'm a little squeamish on these assigned by the city council, because then we go back to L in the same section. It says, if the committee has no city council assigned projects, committee shall revert to quarterly meetings until such a time that a project or work is assigned by the city council that requires meetings more frequently than quarterly. So you, we, we have it too with kind of the opposite language. And it sounds like to me that from feedback from members of both committees is that sometimes they feel like they have trouble putting things on the agenda to discuss that they might want to bring up to the council, and they should be able to be free to do that. You know, their primary role is supporting the goals of the council, but that might be part of supporting the goals of the council. You know, some of the goals are pretty overarching, you know. Uh, a a really nice park system is kind of one of the goals. I'm paraphrasing it, or, you know, a livable community and you know, doing those different things may require them to be able to put things onto the agenda. And this makes it sound like unless it's come before the council and vetted and okayed by the council, they can't discuss it until we've said, go for it. And sometimes the reverse process from a committee is what's necessary, that they hear of a need that we aren't, we don't hear for whatever reason, and they're able to bring it up towards us.
So what we heard you tell us last meeting was your goal was to have a joint work session with your committees at the beginning of the year to come up with the tasks that you jointly believe they could work on and the ideas that, you know, you wanted them to pursue. Um, so that's kind of mapping out the year. And then um, the second language was kind of in response to the other committee where they hadn't had anything on their agenda for four months. So then we, they would revert to quarterly if if that happened with, because personalities on committees can change and committees can, you know, today's highly functioning committee could be tomorrow's reluctant to meet committee. So um, so the idea was that if they were, if they didn't have any agenda items or didn't have any council tasks, um, that they'd be quarterly unless they were tasked with something by council. And again, in in response to us being told that council had tasked things and and the committees had declined to do it. So if there's nothing on the agenda and no tasks, well, this is to try and make it so that they would take on the task um if called upon with no other agenda items. So maybe we could have, I don't know how we could explain better what we were hoping to get at, but it was those two scenarios.
Can I, can I say something? I have my hand up.
Um, so Christine, we're not currently in a public hearing.
I know, but Megan had asked for comment from the other committee members, so I was present, so I thought that I would chime in.
Uh, go ahead.
So regarding the quarterly meeting, just from an economic development, I've been on that uh since its inception, two thousand and fifteen. I'm not currently the chair. However, our scope is a little bit different than Parks in that we have community partners that we do uh bring into our meetings monthly, and we hear their reports, so we know what's happening within our community. And our job as economic development is to do just that, to create economic opportunity. If we are limited to only meeting quarterly or if we have an agenda item, then we certainly would lose our effectiveness.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Wouldn't the agenda item become the guest? And the conversation or the um, the report or the
So.
The presentation of that would be the agenda item?
Those those four meetings that apparently didn't have agenda items still had those reports.
The four meetings in question only had updates from individuals on the committee or who are considered to be liaisons. There was nothing else but updates from each other to each other.
And an update does not.
Well, and it's not to say that those updates don't have any value necessarily, but we did receive complaints that they didn't want to meet just to hear those updates. So I guess I'm a little bit confused, you know, confused that it seems like we're getting opposite feedback now. Because that was generally the complaint, you know, why, why are we getting together just to talk about these updates? You know, this isn't, this isn't worth the time.
I think that I've asked council, Megan specifically, for duties. I've met with Alex. I've also met with Isaac in effort to create agenda items. So it's not from a lack of willingness. We do want to participate and be a productive group.
And I have suggested potential agenda items and projects, but there haven't really been much interest for those projects.
So so this isn't the, but we're, let's, we're, we're not debating this. We're debating the specifics of this resolution, so we'll just uh, we'll move forward and continue discussion whether or not we have meetings. I just think that updates, I think the the feedback I got on updates was is that the where they were on the meeting, they were ahead of business when they did have business, and they took so long. And updates should be at the end of a meeting, not at the beginning of the meeting, so that you do the business. If the business goes along, the updates get cut. Or people that need to leave, need to go. That was some of the feedback I got on that committee.
And again, it's the chairs that create the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We take notes. We take notes about what has been commented on that the committee wants to hear about and draft agenda, but it's not staff's place to actually make and approve an agenda. We send it on final approval and additions to the chair.
Thank you. I'm ready to move on to officers.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to step back really quick to responsibilities and objectives because there was a comment about the language as directed by city council. Um, when staff is looking at these purposes and objectives and how we fit in, we don't control committees. We serve as recording secretaries. And so we were attempting to make it very clear where exactly the committees are getting their direction from. And that was voiced by the chair. Um, she was sat here tonight and told us that there was some confusion between the council goals and the committee's goals. And oftentimes we feel that there is a lack of clarity about where we fit and where the roles go. Where the way we read it, the way I read it is support. It's not my job to make policy decisions. And so this was just an attempt to clarify. And if that's, I felt like we should bring it forward and ask because it was commented on specifically um, to give you an opportunity to talk about that portion of that before we move through the rest of bylaws.
That role would probably fall to the liaison, right?
As an extension of council, I, I believe she, they would speak for council.
I think, I think um, the liaison acts as kind of the feedback loop regularly, maybe between, you know, the council and the committees. Um, and I think what Isaac was speaking to was the um, proposed additional language under responsibilities where he was saying that there was clarification made that um, that items were directed by council. Just, I think, I think maybe there had been miscommunication or misunderstanding amongst the groups that maybe um, and just wanting to make clear that the direction wasn't coming from staff or anything like that, that it was, you know, that they were advisory committees for council as directed by council. But if that language wasn't um, referred, that we just take it out.
I also want to make sure that article or section A says to advise city council on parking recreation matters, period. That is a little more open than the other ones. Allow some flexibility. And trying to make the balance, find the middle ground and the conciliation where we can all understand.
Council President.
I would just, for anyone that doesn't feel it, as a committee member and as a chair, you, you're, I mean, it's this weird chain of command where they're like this side arrow over here, but it really is between us. And I think that we've clarified that uh, with um, uh, between amongst ourselves, uh, that the more we hear from you on what, what you're working on, the more than we know what we're all doing and, and the same goals that we have and um, you know, any chair or member or, you know, is welcome to communicate on what is going well or not going well in their committee. Um, but I think that the liaison um, assigned to the economic development committee and to the parks and rec um, would have a responsibility to either share what occurred in the last meeting or what is current events with those groups. I, I don't know anything that's happening with economic development. And I know that um, Council Santiago is new to taking over parks and has, you know, slowly come to understand what that liaison role looks like, but um, I, I would just hope that committees have communication with us. We're the ones, not staff.
So I on the responsibilities, I, here's what I would probably, you know, I I don't like the as directed by city council. I, I, I just don't like that language. Um, I mean, I would rather have it somewhere say that one of the responsibilities and objectives of the Parks Committee is to to support to support the city council's annual goals for parks and recreational develop, recreational programs and development. And then just remove as directed from, because that's one of the objectives, but you know, I don't want to make them feel muffled on their programming, that if they have a, things that come up or goals that they'd like once, their primary role is to support our goals, yes. But it sounds like, and I know that the Economic Development Committee has done this as well, outside those goals, wanting to do things. And I don't want to make it feel like in the language of the rules that we're looking at them saying, no, you're only going to do what we tell you to do. Because there's a lot of opportunity out there that we're going to miss. And I just think that adding something in here that would say, I mean, I, that I would just say to to support city council's goals in the development and promoting of parks and recreational activities. And I say, I know that it says to, to support the city council, I would just drop that and just say to support the goals and act, you know, versus, it just sounds heavy handed to me. It's like as directed by Joel Haugen. Would you prefer that, Joel? Everything? The czar of parks?
I interpret that as quite the opposite because if the Parks Committee has an opportunity to explore something and it doesn't meet what goals we created 10 months ago, then it, it's limiting them on exploring that option. But if they come to us and say there's an opportunity to explore something, we can say, go for it. But we've run into a situation multiple times where the committee has wanted to explore something. Council has said no, and then they still spend time exploring it. That uses their valuable time and energy and resources into something that maybe the council is not going to support. And in the end, it's a losing battle because they're spending energy working on a project that they love and really want.
Exactly.
But they haven't been, I don't, it's not the word directed, but it's, you know, and I just, I, I think the opposite. I think we would have so many missed opportunities because we create these goals and then you know, 10 months goes by and they go, we've got, look at the counties doing this thing, or we got this opportunity to apply for this grant. We're like, oh, actually, we didn't make a goal for that. So we're going to have to let that one slide like I think that I mean, this is how these are set up. They are committees that advise us and we, it, it's not an us versus them. It's uh, you know, and we're not the end all, I mean, like, maybe I'm interpreting it differently, but I don't see my role as a city council to limit uh, their creativity and their energy and their passion for the topic that they're on.
Tyler.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think this really comes down to a communication and a standard operating procedure issue. I mean, we don't want to limit the parks um, ability to bring things uh, forward to us as they come up. This is a very fluid area. I think it's more of a matter of the chair just coming and addressing us and saying, hey, we have this opportunity and something that we want to look at. And it really falls back on communication. And this was part of the conversation that was, that was had at the uh, last parks meeting. Is that we don't want um, the Parks and Rec uh, folks wasting their time on things that, you know, may require funding that we just don't have or, you know, may have other dynamics that um, for whatever reason, the city can't support it. So really, I think it just comes back to the chair, um, you know, bringing that forward to us and us having an open dialogue about it and making sure that there's um, that everybody's on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
I move that we continue this meeting past nine o'clock.
Hearing a motion to continue the meeting past nine o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Tyler, that's uh, past midnight for you.
Yes, yes, it is.
Mr. Mayor, can I propose a question?
Sure.
So is the idea here not to create parameters to allow for the city council to get the information that we request of the committees to ensure that we're all working, I guess, together?
On the same topics?
Yeah, like our goal setting. I mean, I, I think that one of the concerns I get is, and I'm not saying this is our current committees, but let's say five years from now, there's a committee in there and they go rogue and they focus all their time on putting together a new pool. Um, but yet we have everything that says that's not a great use of your time, nor the council's time because we already know where we stand on that. We want you to focus on Vista Park. And then they go, no, we're not interested in that. And so we have this then potential committee that is doing their own work based on their own intentions, talking to staffs, saying, we want you to draft policy around this. But that is not the chain of command in, in which it is designed. Now, I, I can say that there could be a debate for redesigning that. But I, I feel like we should create a parameter or, or a framework that allows everyone to understand their roles and responsibilities and then also understanding the chain of command. If you want to call it something else, please do. But that as a council, the mayor requests for the appointment of these individuals to be on these particular uh, committees. We, we provide consent with the expectation that they will work on goals identified by the council. If they do have other ideas because, oh, I heard about this grant, fantastic. The chair should work with the liaison to ask for a, a, a moment on the agenda to say, we would really like to focus on this. It wasn't on our, our goals that were outlined at the beginning of the year. So we create fluidity or uh, opportunities for change to occur based on an adoption of the council. Approving those changes because again, we don't want them working on things that I'm not going to say aren't valuable, but don't meet our need based on what our goals are. So I would hope that the exercise here was for us to create those parameters to create clarity of expectation, to create better process so that the energy and effort of our citizens and surrounding community, community members who have pledged to participate meets the expectation of council. But yet we're also building in flexibility, but creating this structure to allow for us to know what to expect. And I think that's again where I asked earlier about our expectation of setting the floor or are we setting the ceiling? And I see this exercise as that we're setting the framework for the for parameters of expectation, not just amongst the committees, but amongst city staff, the council, the mayor, chairs and any of the, the, you know, volunteers and or citizens who may be listening in. And so I don't want to dilute this to make it so, I guess it would be so um, opaque that we, we still walk away at the end of the night, not knowing if we made progress or if we didn't make progress. So I would hope that we can focus on creating a foundation to grow from rather than the what ifs and trying to add in those variables moving forward. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Moving on to officers?
Would like to.
Go ahead.
Uh, my comment is that we don't have uh, anything, um, any requirement that people uh, in order to be assigned to a committee, need to live within city limits. And I just ask that we change the language um, to make that continuous for chairs and vice chairs that they do not have to reside within city limits. I think we've heard from committee members um, tonight and I've talked to other committee members that we need to make sure that we're being inclusive and open as, as we can be to people who are open and willing to help our community and you know, obviously it makes a difference if someone in uh, North Portland wants to join a committee. I think, you know, within reason, we have to talk about people living outside of city limits. So if that becomes, we need something written for the mayor to make that decision on, like within the school district boundary or something like that. Um, so that we're a little more clear on, you know, what we're talking about. Um, when we're, I, I think that the city is affected by so many people that live outside of our boundaries and um, they impact us in really positive ways and we engage with them and interact with them. And so I don't think that we should limit people being on committees based upon them living outside of city limits. I think we need to establish a, like, within reason. Um, you know, but again, there's economic development. Let's say you own a business in Scappus, but you live in Beaverton, you know. Again, I think we need to establish something and maybe that's something that the mayor just, I don't know, but I highly recommend that we take off, that the chair and vice chair um, need to reside within city limits. We have a committee that's going to be cut really thin soon based upon people moving into different positions and uh, I think why not use the people we have? And I don't think that based upon you living outside a city limit line uh, hinders your ability to lead a committee.
So and on, once you're on the committee, it should be the committee's choice um, for the rec election when you think about this. So I'm fine with removing that lives in the city or being the chair or vice chair. I think the committee members should be trusted to appoint their chairman and vice chairman.
I'd like to suggest, you know, that they should live in the uh, school district. I think that's would be appropriate. I can't imagine people being engaged in the Park and Rec Committee or the Economic Development Committee that don't live in the school district. Now, economic development, I can see someone owning a business but not living here. We can make an exception for that, I think, but uh, I maybe I'm wrong, but I, I just seem, I, I think it's very appropriate to have people on our Park and Rec Committee uh, to live within the school district unless they are an ex officio member that's been classified as such. That would be like a specialist that has connections with the, but you know, those, these aren't, these aren't laws. These are, we can, we can make adjustments as we need to if that, that should come up, even though not a voting member, they could attend the meetings. I'm, I like the idea of person living in the school district. It makes sense to me.
I just want to reiterate that it is not written anywhere in this ordinance that people will be denied a place on a committee based upon living outside of city limits. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
The only reason we contemplated that was take the example of Next Adventure. I highly doubt that the person who owns Next Adventure lives in Scappus. Theoretically, they could apply for the committee because they have a vested interest here, not just in economic development, but also in parks. And they could be elected as chair. They might have a close tie to a very certain segment of outdoors and things. I just wanted to be sensitive to making sure the voice of the community was heard through the chair. So it wasn't meant to be discriminatory on through what, what we had heard. But thank you for the clarification.
That doesn't, this doesn't apply to Next Adventure.
It could. There could be a sporting business in a couple of years that establishes here. We just were trying to follow what we had heard. And thank you for the clarification.
Um, at this point in time, I would recommend that we don't add any specific language about where people live. So it's my opinion that we don't add a school district boundary and that we don't add any sort of details about where people live. I, I mean, obviously it's up to the mayor's discretion, but um, just the fact that they do not have to live in city limits, I would like that to be known in this document.
Tyler.
And I'm in agreeance with Council President Greyston on this. I think the bigger question and the important question is, is that uh, you know, what the person brings to the city and the benefits of the city and the community gets out of um, their involvement. I, I think we need to look at that more holistically. And um, the other factors about where they live, if um, you know, you think that that's something important can be viewed secondary to that, but I think primary uh, we really need to be looking at what's the best for the city and what um, you know, the qualifications and benefits that that person would bring to, to the city to make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa.
I'm very passionate about where people live and where they give their time and service. Um, so on this topic in particular, I feel it is extremely important that we set boundaries as to who participates where. Um, it is very possible you could have people who live extremely outside of our area, i.e. Portland, and can come here and get on a committee because they're stellar on paper and have a lot of great ideas, but they don't live here. And they're not vested the way that the volunteers are here in these committees. So I think it would behoove us to ensure that we put some boundaries in place with respect to committee members that are coming into our areas and may, helping to make decisions, form recommendations of how the city is going to be shaped. It no one has a better vested interest than people that live here. And they should be the ones that are helping to inform and shape what our town looks like.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, ready to move on? Article six quorum was also mentioned. Any comments on that? Currently quorum for doing business can be as low as two, long as it's 50% of the members in attendance. They can pass recommendations to council. This was to try and make sure that a significant number of advisory members. Would have to be present to vote on recommendations and other things before.
So I just flat out disagree with this one. Sorry. I mean, I understand what it's trying to do, but if for whatever reason, we're down to five parks, park members and only three. You know, there's only three or four there. I really want them to still to be able to continue to do work. And you know, we'll recognize that it's. Three people doing the work, but you know. Hopefully we are able to. Get enough people interested to fill those positions quickly. I think that quorum. Most organizations don't have a number quorum like that where. They can't do the work if they don't have the members entitled to vote. So I, I just, I, that one I, I. I think is wrong. I think it should be the just left at the original. The lined out language.
This was just a reflection of the bylaws we did read.
Yeah.
A lot of them did have limitations. So. Okay, I'm assuming that you'd also like that to apply to whether or not they continue to meet as a council, a committee of three. You. Subcommittees. There was some confusion about which subcommittees existed, if they existed, what their purpose was. Council had no idea. This attempts to clarify that if there's going to be subcommittees and potentially staff time dedicated those subcommittees beyond just the committee. The council be informed so they can advise the actual committee how to proceed with that. Section essentially allows the committee to petition council to form a subcommittee. I'm asking them for the data as to the reasons why, when, where, how. Staff time dedications.
So for example, this was very useful when we needed extra support with Grabhorn.
They did have subcommittees for certain things.
Yeah.
In the interim, there have been some subcommittees established that no one's really sure.
Okay.
So.
Does was not aware.
Yeah.
Doing.
Okay.
Staff isn't really sure what they're doing.
I literally, I think that, I mean, for a subcommittee, I think that there should be. A vote of the committee to form the subcommittee, which would put it in the record. And then at that point. Staff and council should be informed that that. Yeah, and I don't, I don't understand. It seems like we're getting very bureaucratic on.
So. The current parks committee has somewhere between four and six subcommittees. And if staff was asked to staff those, if they had separate meetings. That could add up to a significant amount of staff time per month. This was to make sure council was aware that staff was going to be putting in hours. Diverting hours from somewhere else to subcommittees and that that is what council wanted. There's about, like I said, four to six if. There is potential.
I'm gonna, Paul wants to make a comment.
The idea on that was to create a lead for each park. That was all that there was to it. So for instance, JJ was, I had a lot of things going on with Chapman landing. And we're saying, okay, you're the lead on that. So if anything Chapman related, JJ, you take it. Then on Grabhorn, we're like, well, okay, let's just put a lead on that. Like, you know, one point person on Grabhorn, Mike Sykes. Put his name in. It was never supposed to be a subcommittee quote unquote, just a lead. It was informal that said, hey. That person, she's handling most of those things or just talk to her first or whatever. Somehow it went up to the level of subcommittee. We've never had extra meetings. We really didn't get that far with it because we had just formed them. But that was the idea. I mean, if you guys don't like it, that's fine.
It's kind of a liaison to the park.
All it was was just a lead. It was just basically like, if there's any questions or issues or whatever, it would start with that person. And they would look into it. That's all, that's all. Very, really simple, to be honest. While I'm here. The reason why we like 12, I'm sorry, is as a professional. We like to look at the calendar and say, all right, here's our 12. And I literally go on the calendar and I mark those off. So I don't have anything that goes elsewhere. If we're trying to get new people, just think about explaining it to them. Well, they meet quarterly, but really they don't. They really meet when they're, we have a lot and we have a lot right now. So it'll probably be. Be 12, but actually it's a quarter. It's just, look, let's call a spade a spade. We're meeting every 12 months. Or once every, once every, every 12 months. Anyway, you know what I'm saying? And then lastly. Look, I, I, you could, Brandon, I understand what you're saying with regards to going rogue. You could also put it the other way. The council could go rogue. They could say you don't do anything. We have liaisons. I mean, if you guys hear from the liaison, they're working on something that. Seems. Inappropriate. I mean, the liaison can tell us too, hey, that's, we're, don't, that shouldn't be on the agenda. I mean, it's pretty simple. Really, I think we're putting so much into this.
I'm not going to disagree with you that we're putting a lot into it, right? And I think we want to try to get it right because again, we've seen a lot of issues. I think though, there is a responsibility as the liaisons, right? And so I think that there's. There's the council's opportunity to grow. And I think us holding our own expectation of the liaisons will be reporting back. They can answer questions maybe through the council. But I don't know, at least some of my interactions with liaisons from council, depending on how engaged they are. We don't, you know, we only know as much. Now I've also like when Grabhorn was taking place. I attended those and I had no, I mean, I'm a citizen, right? And I had interest, but I. I didn't get a whole lot of information back to council from, you know, it was more my actual participation. And so I have to educate myself as a counselor. I expect that of myself. But I also expect that when we have liaisons that with the economic development committee, I wish I would have been hearing back that. Agenda items were, you know, the meetings were counseled, right? The agenda items were not adopted, whatever it may be. So I think that that's part of this process is for us to identify all of those weak links, if we want to call it that. And improve upon it. But yeah, there is a lot of conversation and do we make it too bureaucratic? I don't think that's the intention. But I think that's us working through the process to better understand ourselves. And I agree, it's hard to tell somebody, yeah, we meet quarterly, but it's actually 12, six months out of the, I think it's baseline. We meet quarterly. That's all I would say, you know?
We just don't want to miss opportunities and we also don't want to waste your time either. So if we want to talk about it a little bit first, that's all we want to be able to do. Then we can decide, is it, should we bump it up a level and should council be involved? Yes or no? That's all we want to be able to do. We don't want it to be too restrictive in the wording.
Yeah, I.
I think we all agree with that.
Yeah, and I don't, I think that. Committee members being leads to the different parks is a really great idea.
Staff doesn't disagree. This is specifically about subcommittees and the. The core of the reason is that council can't direct staff to do things that take more than two hours of staff time. We wanted that same to apply to subcommittees. Because we could easily see a circumstance where it could take more. And if council needs council's direction, counselor needs council's direction to ask staff to do things. We felt the same should be true of the committees.
And I understand that.
Isaac, do you have an example? I can't think of an example.
If a subcommittee meets, if it's more than quorum, it's a public meeting, staff has to staff that, take minutes, and that's two hours minimum.
Well, I understand that. Example of where we've gone astray on that.
It's not that we have and not have gone astray, it's that it's potential that we could, since we have these, we don't open these frequently. We try not to.
I got you. Okay.
That's not a quorum of the committee. It's a quorum of the subcommittee is a public meeting.
Yeah.
Understand that.
So, so we were just concerned with staff time and wanting to make sure council knew where staff time was going.
We've been aware of that, but that's good to know.
We're the lucky ones to look through this.
Yeah, aren't we?
Any concerns? I have one more item and I'm done with this.
Thank you.
Okay. Last thing, we added.
Regarding the frequency of meetings, you know, I think it can work either way, to be honest, you know. For that, if you guys set up, you want to meet once a month, that's what's going to happen. That would be the committee makes that decision and for now until forever, that's what you'll do. And so I think it can work either way. I don't, I don't personally see it as being an obstacle in any way.
Last item of note is a report back annually from SPRC by the chair. Just kind of enshrining that. Vast majority of the rest of this is just conduct, ethics, decorum, statements, et cetera, pulled directly from. Council's by team agreement, bylaws, et cetera, ethics, statements in the code. And we want to apologize for the slow amount of time. I'm talking very slow because I want to be very clear. So now it's late. Just want to slow things down. So I understood.
Just a question to the committee members that are still here. Would you prefer more reports to the council than annually? Would it be better if it said semi annually or quarterly or?
I could write at least.
Well, I'm just.
I think at least quarterly reports to council.
Thank you, Christine.
I, I would agree. I would think, I think at least quarterly reports to council. I think, I think one thing that I have learned throughout these past couple of months is that. Being on the backend of communication is what creates a lot of stress for my role. And so to actually streamline it and have quarterly meetings and to be able to have like specific. Goals and for the liaison, I think will be really, really helpful to streamline this role so that another person will eventually want to take it.
It doesn't matter to me what the number is because there's always an open seat at the table, right? I mean, if you want to come to us every meeting and tell us what you're doing, we'd be more than happy to have you, right? And so if it helps you as a chair to know that you need to be prepared. Quarterly, then that's what's important to put in the paperwork and make sure that all chairs are. Meeting that requirement, that I'm fully in favor of it, but I don't ever want you to feel like you. Can't come out and hang out with us.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's also so that staff knows instead of having to plan for an annual, they can. You know, proactively say, hey, Kara. Quarterly reports this week or on this agenda.
I think, I think that would be easier. I mean, in some of the, when there was a discussion about, you know, who directs our goals. I think if I'm coming in here saying every quarter and saying. That like, these are the things that are coming up. These are the things that we've accomplished. There's going to be less hang up about. What is directed and what is not directed. So I think that again, that's going to streamline these conversations. So it. So there is less opportunity for council or a committee to go rogue. And if it's already on the agenda, then that's nice because the, the challenge that I was thinking in my head is, I know for Earth Day. It was about February when we said, oh, like maybe we should consider doing that again. And then we had to, we had to go real fast to make that happen. And it was, it was wonderful. I'm super glad we did it. But if we're not having those conversations, my first thought is, are we going to be able to communicate with you fast enough? To where we can get that work going. And hopefully as these things go along, we'll be more prepared. But you know, with COVID, obviously things happened really fast over the past couple of years. So. I think, I think having those regular meetings would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Ian, sorry for the slow pace. Very deliberate. I have nothing else. Do you have any more questions?
I guess my question is, I mean, it looks like we, you're just enshrining the team agreement into the bylaws.
The team agreement covers more than that. That was meant to cover some of what's in there. But yes, essentially.
I, it just seems. Like we're duplicating and sort of, if it's in the team agreement and we add in that says member shall sign the team agreement and to be bound by the committee team agreement. And that's what's a violation is, it's just.
The team agreement is not as clear. It, it, it says some of these things very broad brush, but it doesn't really say what. Healthy, professional, appropriate conduct is. And it doesn't say what appropriate ethics are and appropriate behavior are in meetings for staff or. Committees or anybody that comes before them, unlike council who has a very refined. And robust agreement that says when people come in here, they need to be called upon. That's not, I'm not saying that's in there. I'm just saying that that kind of level is defined for council, but it's not for the committees. So we could move in team agreement, say they'll sign the team agreement and be bound by it. Enlighten the bylaws. Would achieve the same thing. Or we could move it however council wishes.
Any thoughts by council?
I'm fine leaving it.
Is there anything else?
That's all I got for that. Given the amount of changes. And there's a lot. I'd like to push this one more meeting. We have it on the schedule for two for the resolutions.
So. I just need a motion to postpone. These resolutions to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So that Isaac can update and. Bring them back.
Mr. Mayor.
Council president.
I move that we move resolution 22-19 and 22-20 to the next council meeting for review.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Almost done.
Oh, yeah. All right. Isaac, you're the star of the night. Adventure Fest recap.
So Adventure Fest went well, very well attended. The kids area was full all day from. Eight thirty till almost nine at night. People came and enjoyed the event. I think really essentially the purpose with this tonight is to not, we can get as deep as you want or not. Purpose is, is that as we experienced this year, we don't start planning early. There are major setbacks in terms of sponsorships, timing, budgeting. So the real purpose with this is to just talk with council about what the event costs, what it might cost next year. And to see if council wants to set a tentative date now without any kind of scope, so that staff can begin working on that. I think the big thing to note is that if you look at the budget document.
Paul, I have a question. About this. Is there a date for Run With Neil for next year?
There's not a date yet.
Okay.
But we would like to set it. And the question to the city and to Isaac is, do you want it to be? Together again, because we have no problem doing it separately as well.
You try to do it together.
I, it went well. I think that a lot of the folks who ran stayed for the event.
I think the discussion was, you know, would there maybe be better attendance if we did it at a different date? That was Treadway's feedback.
One of the feedbacks was that right after school starts, the week after school starts, a lot of people are starting.
Soccer Saturday.
Right. And there's football games and there's all these conflicts all of a sudden.
Football jerseys and pads and whatnot. And so there's not, they don't have a lot of money to go do things sometimes. So really it's about the date.
Yeah, as you know, we had an excessive heat wave in August a year ago. Which really hurt our attendance as well.
They're a tendency charm.
Yeah, which why we pushed it to September. I mean, it really wouldn't affect our run because our run's at eight in the morning, which you guys weren't there, I noticed.
I was only got thirds, so.
I was setting up my booth.
We high five, I high five.
I was putting in my soccer wagon.
Right.
We were going to eventually talk through, council proposed the last weekend in June or I think.
We, yeah, we just, we kicked around some other ideas just because we were worried that perhaps even though we thought, well. Thoughts September would be cooler. Of course, it was really hot. But also just the feedback from Treadway about the date and it being, you know, conflicting with, you know, the, that night there was a. Football game and we had the movie that night and just some other things like that. And so there was some thought, well, you know, should we do it? Earlier in the summer or something like that to try to boost attendance. So that was just the idea there.
Still trying to miss that heat.
Right.
From the run perspective, we could give you a few dates that wouldn't work only because there's a few really big runs that we wouldn't want to be on top of in the Portland area. And then you guys can take the rest of those dates and decide and we could work together on that. I will say, I mean, it went really well. I mean, I know the Treadway guys now because it's been two, two things already. There's always little hiccups, but honestly, it went really great. Pete was there as well. He was, he came across the finish line. But he won an award. He said, I don't know what it was, but he said he did. But yeah, we'd love to do it together. I think there's a lot of opportunities to market together a little better. Because you know, if you come to the event early, you want to stay a little later, but we're more than willing to. Work with Treadway and Isaac and whoever else to make it a bigger event for everybody.
Thank you. Sorry to catch you up.
Oh, no problem.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
So Paul's going to give me some.
Maybe we need to.
We have a breakdown meeting on Wednesday with the board of directors. We have a breakdown meeting on Wednesday with the Board of Directors, and so we'll, we'll talk about it.
So maybe we need to come back then.
It sounds like council is tentatively wanting to do this again.
I'm highly in favor of the event and that it coordinates.
Well, and I think that, you know, I mean, if we can get, if we, if the date's set sooner, we can get marketing materials out there sooner and.
So.
So I, I hate it to cut it short, only and because we still have to review, we still have a executive session that we have to do and.
I leave you with 20 seconds.
Okay.
Please, please look at the budget and the sponsorship numbers and think very hard about scope. Thank you.
Yeah, I think scope, yeah, okay. I'll do.
That was my 20 seconds.
All right. Announcements, calendar. Next council meeting will be on Monday, October 17th. It's with a work session at six o'clock, city council meeting at seven, Economic Development Committee on the 20th at noon, Parks and Rec meeting at 6:00 PM on the 20th. Next Planning Commission meeting is at 7:00 PM on the 27th. Alex, do you have anything?
I do not.
All right. Josh, Tyler, do either of you have anything? I'm hoping it's not so we can get into the executive session.
It's 12:31 here.
Nothing for me.
I've forgotten about it.
Okay, council president.
Looks like I'm not going to say anything.
Counselor Lasowski.
Just want to say thank you to the officers that were at the homecoming match and we're excited to have them on the team. Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, I'm good as well. Where is my executive session thing? All right.
Hey, Scott.
Then we're going to come back. Yeah, the City of Scaphus will now meet in executive session for the purpose of ORS 192.660. The exec, executive session is held pursuant. There's Isaac.
You hear something? Oh, I was like, I saw.
One and two. I assume he has. He's got to go back to October 3 or some.
He had to just. His time. He had to go back to October 3.
Back to the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he does. He's got to go back to yesterday. Let's find out what, what, what's going to happen on October 4.
Job, Alex. That's what I was talking about.
Yes, I did.
Five DeLorean.
Yes.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and come out of executive session? We're back in open session. Next item on the agenda, approve the city manager review and consider a merit increase. Is there any discussion or or motion or requests?
Yeah, I would request to hear Alex Rains's opinions on what type of merit or compensation she would request based on the performance review.
Can I, can I guide a little bit? So I think the first, the first motion would be to approve a satisfactory performance evaluation for the city manager. And then once we have done that, we can move into consideration of a potential merit increase. So I would suggest a motion such as I move to approve a successful performance of view for the city manager.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel.
I move that we approve the performance and development appraisal completed in October of 2022 for Alex Rains for her fully satisfactory completion of the performance evaluation.
Hearing a motion by Counselor Lasowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McHugh, is there any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now on to the consideration of a merit increase. You have a question for?
Ask it three times.
What?
Alex, do you have any requests?
Yes.
So I had requested or would request a 5% merit increase and a one-time allocation of 40 hours to my vacation leave bank. The 5%, that's not a random number. Generally speaking, you know, when we give merit increases to, to staff, this was something also Michael did before me. Unless the person is, you know, at the end of their range, generally speaking, the merit increases were right around 5% for the most part. So it is kind of based in precedent or previous, you know, history. And also usually the steps between our bargaining agreements, collective bargaining agreements are also around 5% also. So that's kind of where I base that off of.
Alex, where are you at right now with your PTO? With your leave time?
I accrue 11.34 hours per month. And I think the max in the personnel handbook is up to 15, 16? Yeah. And so I'm not asking for the change in the accrual rate, just a one-time addition of 40 hours.
At 1. what? Or 11. what?
11.34 is what I'm currently at.
You want to go up to 176?
One time.
One time. I'm not, yeah, I'm not asking for a change.
Next year you would, you know.
Well.
Yeah, you, well, next year we'll get there. Let's not talk about that.
So the negotiator, I mean, wants to push back and start negotiating, but.
Could you remind us of your current wage?
I think with the COLA, I'm at, right at, I don't think, I don't think it's exactly 135, but it's right in that neighborhood.
Alex, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So for the wage increase request, I think it's very clear for the vacation, it's a 40-hour, just a one-time 40-hour vacation benefit. Would it impact any accrual cap?
No.
Can you explain the 5% merit pay that the other employees get? I, first I've heard of that.
Oh, it's just that typically speaking, when, so, you know, each position has, you know, a salary range that they are working within. So generally speaking, until they reach the maximum or the cap of that salary range, we, if, if they're getting a merit increase, they will get a 5% merit increase for the most part, plus the cost of living adjustment.
Everybody gets it then, right? Except the person at the top.
More or less, yeah. Unless, unless they are at the top of their range, in which case then they only receive the cost of living adjustment every year.
It's, it's very typical and, well, Ashley knows more about this than I do, but in represented classifications, especially for, I mean, all of the different police classifications throughout the police departments throughout Oregon. And it usually is 5%. Sometimes it's 6%. Sometimes it's 4%. It just depends. But I think the 5% step increases extremely are very reasonable. I have no problem with the 5%.
But I think the 5% step increases extremely are very reasonable. I have no problem with the 5%.
The, the step increases that you speak of, the 5% are based on our represented staff under a CBA, correct?
Right, so they do kind of mirror that. And it's not that we've never had staff get bigger increases than that. It's just, that's fairly typical.
And from somebody who's worked on CBAs in the past, I think some of the increase comparative to unrepresented is due to the fact that they have a lower scale to start with. So how many other staff members make 135,000 on, on staff?
Just me.
Right, and so I, I.
Although I would say that the top paid department heads aren't too far below me. I mean, they're not.
Again, non-represented, non.
Correct. Yeah, so, right, so none of the management staff are going to be, are represented.
So what do you give your department heads on their annual review as a standardized increase?
So if they aren't topped out, which some of them are, then you're talking a 5% and then they get, everyone gets the cost of living adjustment.
So that's equitable from your represented and your non-represented.
Correct. It's pretty consistent.
Yeah, I think that's been kind of the policy of the city.
Generally speaking, yes.
Some odd years that unrepresented staff had.
Yeah.
I think it's in the policy manual.
Well, we get, yeah, so when we always do, we typically mirror like the cost of living adjustments to what's in the CBAs. So everyone's kind of getting essentially the same. We do try to make it, you know, as fair as possible. Again, we've, there have been times where people have gotten larger increases in the 5%, but that's not as typical as the 5% vary increases.
So based on my math, the request is actually like about a $562 per month increase. At 5%.
It puts her at one, based on the 135 figure, it puts her about 141,750 per annual. I, I think the 5% is reasonable and if you look at the higher paid classifications over in like Hillsborough and Beaverton too, it's, they still, even if they're at 100K plus annual salary, they're still at least 5% step increases from what I've ever seen.
Oh, new to me.
I'll throw my voice in here too. Yes, it is very typical for almost all public employees to receive step increases, especially at the beginning of their tenure with their employer. So it is typically five to seven years. It is typical for representative employees and unrepresented employees. City managers are obviously in a class of their own because they negotiate their own contract. But, you know, oftentimes with the new city manager, the same concept applies.
Yeah, I would agree with Tyler as well. I think that it is fair and warranted.
What about the, so the next item that she's requesting is the 40-hour one-time bump in vacation hours.
Actually, Scott.
Or PTO.
Can we step back for a second? Do we have this budgeted for, first of all?
Yes, yeah, I, we, the budget is typically budgeted for, it, it pre-assumes that the merit increase and COLA will be in the budget. So.
So I, I'm fine with the 5%, but I'm just going to get this out there really quick because it's getting so late, but I would push back on and go to 30 hours on the one time.
You accept that, Alex?
I mean, I, that's fine. I mean, I, I'm, yeah, I'd prefer 40 hours, but I don't know how much I really want to argue about it at almost 10 o'clock at night and for 10 hours, so.
We got to do these late in the night.
This is our strategy.
Like on the East Coast. But, um.
So from a legal perspective, under, under Alex's contract, it says the manager compensation may be adjusted adjusted based on merit in conjunction with evaluation conducted pursuant to Section 5, which is what we're doing. So because she's not asking for a change in her accrual, I do not think that any change in the contract would be necessary to effectuate the change. We would just need to be clear in the motion to create a record that that is what was, if that is the case, then that is what was provided.
Yeah, in my, anytime when somebody asks for time off, for me too, it's because we're so short-staffed as it is, we do a lot with little staff that that's more concerning to me than 5%. So that's where I'm coming from with the pushback on 30, but I'm just one voice here. It's just, I mean, it's not a, it's not a huge deal.
It's the negotiator and you.
Just one more question. Now, when the staff gets their 5%, they don't also request for days off, do they?
They do.
Well, they do. They want more days off with plus the 5%? Getting your unclassified leader, leaders, CBA don't have, people that are represented don't have the opportunity to go.
No, but with the upper level of management, yeah, absolutely. They ask for stuff like that. You know, sometimes it depends on the situation. Sometimes I've granted those, sometimes not. And, and again, not, not changing their accrual rates, but offering them sometimes one-time bumps, you know, yes, I have done that with them.
This has been a, an ask in the past that we've received from other leadership besides you. So entertaining hours with the increase isn't new to us. I think just solidifying a number that we can all move on from to get us to the next step of making a motion.
Well. I would think that if we, somebody made a motion, that then we can move forward.
It's one of our, one of clarification. I don't remember ever talking about this with Mike.
So my.
And then they told us about it? How'd we do that?
He asked us.
Mike asked us straight up.
He would ask either straight up, yeah.
He sat there and asked us.
Although, and typically, be Mike was in a different world than Alex in that he was at the, he's at the endgame of his career.
I just tried to figure out, did I just forget this? I guess.
He was mostly, he was asking for, he always, he, he would always forego merit increases for extra PTL.
Remember hearing that. I don't remember hearing from him though.
I can't.
I'm a little concerned not forgetting this.
I'm trying to remember, because we, remember, we changed up the review process a little bit with Alex. So that might have been something where we, where I went and sat down and negotiated with Mike and then brought it back to council.
Maybe, I have no recollection.
Yeah, but then he would ask, but we.
Josh, do you have an opinion on the hours?
I mean, for me, 30, 40 hours is not really that much of a difference to me, but, I mean, I can see Tyler's point as well. Just making sure, obviously with short staff, making sure stuff gets done. So I can go one way or the other.
I'm just going to vote yes for whatever motion gets made.
I'm going to put what she asked and people can deny it or not. So, Mr. Mayor?
Council President.
Pursuant to the city's employment agreement with Ms. Rains, based on her performance as our city manager, I propose the 5% merit increase to her base salary as well as an additional 40 hours bank to her paid time off.
I second it.
Didn't we make that motion, say a one-time?
Sorry, a one-time.
40-hour bank.
40-hour.
A time off.
Thank you.
That's seconded by you still, Pete? All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We're at the end of the evening. Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Nice job, Alex.
Good night, guys.
Good luck.